Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Dare County Board of Commissioners, May the 7th Board Meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask Reverend George Laurie. Yeah, I refer you as that, George. Thank you for being here and giving us an invitation.
First of all, I want to thank the Dare County Commissioners for allowing members of the North Dare Ministers Association to open each of your readings with a prayer. Secondly, I'd like to commend your efforts in the area of affordable housing, in spite of the pushback you're receiving from every municipality. Who wants it but not in their town? I want to specifically add Donna Creef and Malcolm Fearing to my prayer list for affordable housing. Lastly, I want to thank you for your continuing support for our local College of the Albemarle Campus, Outer Banks Hospital. You guys are doing an excellent job, in my opinion. So I'd like to offer the following prayer. Blessed are you, Lord our God, sovereign of all, who has given us life, sustains us, and brought us to this season. We thank you and sing your praises for our lives which are in your hand, for our souls which are in your keeping. You are goodness, you are compassion, you have always been our hope. Be with these commissioners and others who serve Dare County on a daily basis. Guide them in what continues to be the challenge of a lifetime. Give them the vision and fortitude of people like Frank Stick, Mark Bassnight, Stan White, Warren Judge. Soften their hearts and minds so that every decision they make is the best one. Humble them to realize they are all human and make mistakes because the residents of Dare County will respect them even more. Almighty God, grace us with your light when our path grows dark, with your strength when we grow weary, and with your support when we falter and all resolve. King of the universe, you have commanded us to do your work for the betterment of the Outer Banks. May this be God's will, and all God's people say amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Stay safe and have a blessed tourist season.
Thank you, George. May we all stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a full house this morning. It's great to see so many folks here this morning. I would like to point out, we have joining us this morning with some of the board members from the Board of Education. We have David Twitty Chair with us this morning, Susan Bothwell, Mary Ellen Balance, Ron Payne, and I believe we also have the Superintendent Bassnight is with us this morning. We also have with us the Director of the Community Foundation, Chris Sawen. Chris, thank you for being here this morning. So, welcome again, everyone, for your attendance here. And at this time, I'll turn it over to the County Manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item one on the agenda is the Chairman's opening remarks.
Thank you, County Manager. I just have one item to bring everyone up to date on. I can't help but feel like that the trip that myself, Vice Chairman Overman, Commissioner Couch, and the County Manager made to DC, I guess it's been about three weeks or so ago, that we met with Tillis' staff and Bud's staff concerning the petroleum issue in Buxton. And I can't help but believe that we made some progress because, quite honestly, the Army Corps of Engineers out of the Savannah District Superintendent Halleck had been working with those folks for almost eight months and not getting much response out of that group. And so I feel like, just three weeks ago, in this short period of time, that we did make some progress meeting with our legislators in DC. The leadership of the US Army Corps Southern Atlantic Division out of the Savannah District conducted a site visit on May the 1st. And they met with representatives from the National Park Service to evaluate the conditions that, at the formerly used defense site, Buxton Naval Facility. And they discussed the agency's concerns regarding the petroleum contamination down there. And since the visit, they met with us as well, even our Health and Human Services Director, Sheila Davies, was in this meeting with myself and the Vice Chair and County Manager to discuss the issue and, quite honestly, the concerns that we have because even though we have two-thirds of the beach that's contaminated, we've got 75 miles of pristine beach, and we're hearing rumors that people are canceling reservations. And we cannot, we kind of not afford it. The business bureau, our public information office, is trying to make it very clear that we have 75 miles of excellent beach and to keep our visitors headed down here and coming our way. I think they were genuine. We had a very good meeting with them. They had not, they had planned on doing an evaluation on one specific area, pipe there, that they felt was where some of the contamination was coming from, and they weren't even going to address this or put out a bid to try to see where the source was coming from until September. After our meeting, they stepped that up. And they actually, last week, awarded a contract for a firm to come in and do that, and they will be doing that sometime this week. They also promised that they would be more transparent, that they would reach out to the community more, put out additional public announcements of what's taking place on a regular basis. They've agreed, and they hadn't agreed to do this up until recently, that they would have regular meetings and they would like to have a community meeting on Hatteras Island to talk about the progress and what's going on. And they've proposed the dates of May the 14th or the 21st. So I put that out to my board this morning. I've told them that the 14th would work for myself, and several of you have agreed to that. So if that's the case, we will certainly try to reach out to the Park Service and all of our other stakeholders and shoot for a 6:00 meeting. I would presume the best place County Manager would be the Fedezon Center. So if that's the pleasure of the board, I'll respond back to them on the 14th so that we can get another update. The way there, there's something called FUDS funding through the federal government, and that those FUDS funds are concerned about addressing contaminants. The FUDS funds do not speak to infrastructure, which we all know there is still some remaining infrastructure down there that needs to be removed. But the FUDS program does not fund that. So Colonel Sturgis from the Savannah District is working to, with other agencies, to try to see what they can do to assist in federal government stepping up to the plate and handling the infrastructure piece. So we'll get some updates on the 14th where we are there. So this is an ongoing thing. I feel good now about what progress has been made. I'm anxious to see the source that they're looking at, and they'll take it back all the way. It's a pipe underground, and they'll take it all the way back to wherever the source, the contaminant's coming from underground or whatever, and try to mitigate that. But we continue to need to work on the infrastructure piece. So we will be continuing to speak to our federal legislators. We've also sent letters to the Governor. DEQ has issued a very strong statement to the Corps, and they reacted pretty quick. I'm really pleased that they fast-forwarded that contract to get this done, so they'll be handling that this week. And so stay tuned, but hopefully we can get this resolved as soon as possible. So that's the update on the Buxton contaminant issue. That's all I have this morning, and the Chairman's comments, County Manager.
Chairman, that brings us to item two on the agenda, and this is the time we recognize our employees for their service with Dare County. We have 35 years of service that we're recognizing this morning, and first is Misty Parnell to receive her 10-year pin from Chief Jenny Collins. I'm sorry, from Josh Coltrane, I read the second. Sorry, Josh.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Today I have the privilege of presenting Misty Parnell with her 10-year service pin. Misty is a local to Dare County. She grew up in Wanches. She graduated from Manio High School, class of 1991. After graduating Manio High School, she attended UNC Wilmington. After that, she came back here to Dare County and began a career at Jockeys Ridge as an Assistant Park Ranger. She worked with them until 2002. In 2002, she took a job with Marine Fisheries, working in shellfish sanitation as a microbiology lab tech. She worked there for 12 years, and then she began her EH career with us in May of 2014. She started out as an Environmental Health Specialist, and in August of 2018, she was promoted to Senior Environmental Health Specialist, where she continues in that role to this day. She leads our Food and Lodging section. She was recently recognized as the April Employee of the Month, which kind of speaks for itself, for her work ethic and her outstanding service to Dare County. I can't say enough great things about her and the job she has done. She holds five different state authorizations, including food and lodging institutions, commercial swimming pools, tattoo establishments, childcare centers in schools, and child-led poisoning prevention. She takes the lead role in training all the new staff that work in the Food and Lodging section, and ensures that they'll be well-equipped to serve Dare County. She's a tremendous asset to our team. On a personal side, she's an avid baseball fan, and she's a very proud aunt. She actually has a nephew that is on the AAA New York Yankees affiliate. And he was recently called, was it last month?
April 8th, he played for the New York Yankees Major League.
Yeah, got called up to the big league team, and actually got to pitch the ninth inning and close out a game. So that was great. So we're proud of that.
He threw four pitches and three outs.
Three outs.
Oh, right.
So she's very proud of that, and we all hope that next time he sticks to the big league team. But Misty, it's been a great 10 years, and on behalf of the EH team of Dare County, thank you for your outstanding service and dedication. Congratulations, and we look forward to another 10 years.
Next, if Steve Allen would come forward to receive his 10-year pin from Jenny Collins.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, County staff. I'd like to introduce Paramedic Steve Allen here. Steve started his healthcare career, actually, as a nurse. And he was a nurse from 1990 to 2005. So for 15 years, he served, he worked in med surg, ORs, emergency departments, and also home health. And this was in Williamson and Bertie Counties. He decided to wise up and leave nursing and come to EMS. And so in 2005, he became a paramedic, but he was working in Bertie County as an EMT and a paramedic. But in 2011, his family decided that the reputation of Dare County and Dare County schools was where they needed to be, and so they relocated to Dare County so that his son could go to school here in the county. And he continued to work with Bertie. In 2014, he got wise again and came to Dare County EMS, where we hired him as a paramedic. Steve's known to be a relatively quiet person, but he has quite the sense of humor that if you listen closely, there's these little quips that come out underneath his breath. But he is also one that does not sit idle. You'll find him constantly in the station, fiddling with something, fixing something. You never have to ask him. He just sees that it needs to get taken care of, and he will take care of it. So he feels that it's a great privilege to provide EMS to the Dare County citizens and to the community and to the visitors that come here. So Steve, thank you for 10 years. Here's to many more, right?
Yes.
And I appreciate that, so thank you.
Jenny, if you'll stay right there. Next, if Kimberly Rusk would come forward to get her 15-year pin.
I'd like to introduce Kimberly Brooke at Walrusk. We call her Brooke. Ever since she was little, she knew she wanted a career in medicine. Even so much through middle school and high school, she volunteered at Rowan Medical Center. And she initially thought she wanted to be a nurse also. But when she took her EMT class, she realized that that was where she wanted to be, and that's where she put in her career. She went to school at Western Carolina University. Go Cats, right? And while she was in school, she had gone on several mission trips. And one of the mission trips was an opportunity to become here in Hatteras Island as part of Hurricane Isabel relief efforts and recovery efforts. That was the first time she had ever stepped into the Outer Banks area. And she fell in love with the area, knew that she wanted to apply to work here once she finished her college education. She did graduate with a BS in Emergency Medical Care with a concentration in Healthcare Management. In 2004, she finished that, her schooling and her paramedic certification, she returned to Dare County, where she was hired. Life took her away for about three years to Lincoln, North Carolina, and Bedford, Tennessee. In 2009, she returned to Dare, and she's been here ever since. She has been assigned on Dare Med Flight as one of the flight medics. In 2019, she was promoted to Lieutenant. She currently is working in our administrative staff and handles all of our supply ordering, logistics, and chasing around medical supply company. So Brooke, thank you for 15 years of dedicated service. Her daughter Grace is here with her today, and we look forward to many, many more.
Thank you.
And Jenny, if you'd stay right there for our Employee of the Month.
Thank you. I'd like to call up Captain Steve Burrit. We'll talk later about your comments yesterday. This is Captain Steve Burrit. He actually started his career with the county with buildings and grounds. In 2006, he was hired as an electrician. And that's where, he started off in 2009, Dare EMS was able to steal him away. He was an intermediate at that time, or what we call now an advanced EMT. In 2011, he obtained his paramedic and was promoted, and that started a string of promotions. In 2015, he was promoted to Lieutenant, and 2018 promoted to Captain. He has filled a variety of assignments during his tenure, both on ground units with Dare Med Flight. He actually was the lieutenant overseeing Dare Med Flight for a while, operations shift supervisor at the captain level, and he's currently assigned as an administrative captain in our training section, which some of his primary duties there are to track continuing education hours for all the staff. We have to do yearly reports on that. Teaching classes, orientations for new employees, quality assurance and quality improvement activities. And he has additional projects as far as our go-to facility maintenance guy. Since he has that background with buildings and grounds, it fit nicely, which lately's been very busy for him with the new stations and helping to do some of the testing for the acceptance of the various programs that we have coming in with the new stations, as well as keep up our existing stations. So he does liaison very much with buildings and grounds on bigger issues and things that we can't take care of in the station. As you can imagine, having our facilities operate on a 24/7 basis means that we don't really ever get that time off. And it's often that I'll get notified that we have a problem at one of the station, and they'll say Steve's already in and working on the problem. And that's on nights and weekends and holidays that that seems to happen. One of his greatest strengths, though, is his coaching and mentoring, and that had a huge portion of his nomination. He is adaptable to multiple personalities. He just can communicate very well with a whole asunderie of people, and that makes him sought out by many. You never have to guess his opinion. He's very open to share it, but it comes from a part of being very well thought out and calculated. And that's why people do seek him out, because they know that they're going to get an honest answer from him every time. And it's going to come from, even if the message may be not exactly what they want to hear, it's one full of compassion and what they need to hear. He is very respected by the employees. He holds those employees accountable. He makes sure that they understand why his comments are coming back to them. He's a tremendous listener. He will reflect on the information, and he really wants to make people better. He's frequently cited by the employees as we're doing interviews for promotions, and we'll ask, you know, who have you been working with? Steve's name is always one of those names that come up, that they've sought some help in development and professionally. He is married. His wife, Kristen Burrit, is on Med Flight as one of our flight medics. And they have a little boy, Carter, who really is the boss of their house, and Kristen's standing over there, so we snuck her in. So Steve, thank you for everything that you do, and congratulations on being nominated and
Thank you.
one employee of the month. Thank you.
Before we go to public comment, with those of you that received an award this morning, please go right out through this door on my left for a picture, and I'll wait just a second for the room to clear before we go to public comment. Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time that's been set aside for public comment. If you have public comment this morning and you've not signed up, please raise your hand. When you do, I'll recognize you. Please come to the podium. Please limit your comments to five minutes. There's a green light on the podium when your time begins. There's a yellow light on the podium when you have about a minute left, and when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks. On the sign-up sheet, the first person that I have is Debbie Swick.
Before we do that, I overlooked a couple of folks in the audience. It's hard to see everybody. We've got a full house this morning, but I understand Mayor Witshrum is with us this morning, and also Commissioner Ivy Ingram from KDH. Thank y'all for being here. Yes, ma'am?
Good morning.
You go.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Debbie Swick. I am the creator of ban balloon releases in North Carolina. Every decision that you make as a commission board is done with the best interests of the people and the environment at your foremost thought, and I ask you to include wildlife in this process. I am trying to ban the release of helium balloons in the state of North Carolina. And while I have been successful in taking it through some towns locally, I need your help to do the first county in North Carolina. A helium balloon, such as this, can travel up to 1,300 miles. A latex balloon made of plant-based materials has chemicals added to it. It never, ever goes away in the environment. They last for five to six years. This is a Mylar balloon made from petroleum and plastic and metal. It lasts for over 100 years. This ribbon can last up to 150 years. They break down into microplastics. They never, ever, ever leave our environment. There is no such thing as biodegradable. It does not exist, sadly, but it does not exist. The difference between this and a litter ordinance is very specific, and council has told me that, I can repeat this, when you release this balloon on the ground like that, it is litter on the ground. The police officer writes me a citation, he tells me to pick it up. When this is filled with helium, it drifts away. It does not become actual litter until it is released, and that's what we want to eliminate. People release balloons for all kinds of occasions, graduations, weddings, gender reveals, as well as memorials, which is the big one. If we can eliminate that, we can eliminate an awful lot of litter. It is killing our wildlife. It is strangling them. You all remember the Gervais Beaked Whale calf that died in November of 2023? It ingested a balloon just like this. So I ask you to help me out, establish an ordinance to ban the release of all helium balloons. Also, if you could include in that, to put weights on all balloons sold, that they do not accidentally drift away. And the tide balloons outdoors need to be eliminated as well. The Outer Banks Association of Realtors has since eliminated all use of balloons on signage, and I ask that you do that as well. In our windy environment, they break free, and they land in the ocean, and they cause trouble. So I thank you for your consideration. I hope that you'll consider putting this on your agenda for next month, but thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Debbie.
Welcome, Ms. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me here this morning. My name is Carla Hepert, and I'm here on behalf of Children and Youth Partnership for Dare County. This coming Friday, May 10th, we're going to be having our 15th Annual Kids Fest event at Roanoke Island Festival Park in Manio. It's going to be 9:30 to 12:30 that morning, and we just wanted to come and invite you all to come to Kids Fest. When Kids Fest first began many years ago, it started as a picnic for the week of the young child. It was celebrating young children, celebrating the early childhood educators who care for them. Since that time, it has grown into the amazing children's festival that it is, and we're super excited to celebrate that this year and celebrate 15 years of this amazing event. Kids Fest is geared towards young children, ages birth to five, and it's completely free for all attendees. In the past, we have brought out over 1,600 people to Festival Park to celebrate Kids Fest, and this year we have over 60 different exhibitors that are going to be coming out. The exhibitors are local businesses and organizations in our community that come together to provide a free, age-appropriate activity for young children. It's truly just a fun morning of learning through play. We'll have large vehicles to explore. We'll have stomp rockets, obstacle courses, music, arts and crafts. The Lost Colony will be performing, the Native American dancers from the Lost Colony will be coming to perform. Kids Fest truly embodies the essence of community. Kids Fest truly embodies the essence of community that is Dare County. When children and families walk out onto that field, they know that everybody is there for a purpose. And that purpose is to celebrate young children. And we hope that you guys will come celebrate with us as well. Thank you.
Next, Ms. Heather Jeanette.
Who's that, Bobby?
Heather Jeanette.
Welcome, just Ms. Jeanette.
Thank you. Mr. Alton and members of the board. My name is Heather Jeanette, and I am here with Brian Harris, Jason Hall, and Wendy Mundon. And together, we make up the Buxton Civic Association. And as such, we are addressing you on behalf of the residents and visitors of Buxton. And Chairman Woodard, I want to thank you for the update that you gave regarding the hazardous beach conditions in Buxton. And it kind of eliminated the need for the first page of this, as you are all aware clearly of the issues. And we want to thank you for taking that fight to Washington. And we also hope to share some of the credit for getting this momentum going. As a newly formed civic association, we are incredibly proud of what we've been able to accomplish in a short period of time. And we have been an example of the power of a collective voice in reaching a common goal, utilizing public meetings, social media, phone calls, and letter writing. We have also generated movement on this topic. We have been in communication with Mike McIntyre, a former U.S. Congressman and accomplished lawyer, whose colleagues and staff include former Army Corps employees and have experience with FUDS legislation. I would challenge a few things that they pointed out, saying that they may only be responsible for cleaning the hazardous material. Their site currently states that they are, their responsibilities include but are not limited to, quote, "cleaning up hazardous, toxic, and radioactive waste sites, removing munitions and explosives of concern and munitions constituents, and doing building demolition and debris removal." So it is our stance that they are perhaps responsible for more than just removing one pipe. And I'm sorry that this kind of picks up in the middle of a pre-written speech, but you stole a little bit of my thunder. So the crux of the matter, we feel, is that there have been years and years of intentional misdirection and misleading by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers in an attempt to deny responsibility. They have attempted to refute the designation of the site as a FUDS, made claims that the current situation is a result of natural force and erosion rather than gross negligence, employed stall tactics, and been tight-fisted with the release of testing results and communication. The problems resulting from the Army Corps refusal to take accountability have been compounded by further confusion surrounding the site, given its ownership history and current management. Many people, including local officials, have pointed to the Coast Guard as being a responsible party. Others have suggested that the National Park Service, as current managers of the beach, should be the ones to perform remediation tasks. Further, and perhaps most importantly, many people are simply unaware that the problem exists. This is true for those that live less than a mile away. So it's understandable that those in other villages or other parts of the county really have no idea what's going on. We are here today to ask the Board of Commissioners to assist us in keeping this momentum going and to help expedite a solution to these hazards, which have the potential to really devastate our community, as you mentioned. This area is a half a mile from Cape Point and the Lighthouse. It's home to one of the most iconic surfing breaks on the East Coast. What happens when these decades of inaction result in more beach closures or even worse serious health concerns? Our board is made up of residents of Buxton, some lifelong, some who located here more recently, having loved the area for most of their lives. We are homeowners, business owners, public servants, first responders, and parents who recognize the privilege we have to live and work in the most beautiful place in the world. We came together out of a sense of urgency to finally address a disastrous situation because we care about our home. The truth is, though, that we are going, there are going to be conversations and dealings that we are simply unable to facilitate. There are tables at which we cannot quite yet demand a seat. We don't have the ability to force the Army Corps to respond to our emails. We've invited them. They have not come. We need the help of our local government. We need to feel like Buxton and these issues are not forgotten by people whose interests lie north of Oregon Inlet. Just last weekend, we were informed that Mr. Alton is the chair of the North Carolina Beach Inlet and Waterway Association and that this group happens to have its spring meeting in two days. And the people that are going to be there are the same people that we've been trying to get in a room together, the Army Corps, the Coast Guard, the Coastal Federation. We have said over and over that we need to have these people together so that their ability to dodge hard questions and send out carefully worded emails and press releases that attempt to absolve them of any responsibility is removed. We're asking that you take this opportunity to respectfully demand some accountability. We appreciate the statements that Army Corps has put out recently. We appreciate the fact that they are moving towards taking accountability. And we just hope that you guys will take this opportunity to continue that momentum. Thank you.
Heather, Heather. Just stay right there, if you will. Just for you and your civic association, we're not going to let up on this. Really, for eight months, we got nothing out of Army Corps. And I truly believe that the vice chairman's mind and Commissioner Couch and the county manager going to DC and meeting with Tillis's staff and Bud's staff generated the Savannah District to get off their you-know-what.
I didn't know how to politely ask you to step on their neck.
Well, I just want to reassure the association that we're on this and we're going to ride it. And we're going to ride it through. And does the 14th work for you folks?
We'll make it work.
You'll make it work. Okay, good. So that's what we're going to propose.
And we just ask that you keep us in the loop, too.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
And just by the way, the NC Byways is open to the public?
We're sponsored now.
There you go. So you'll have an opportunity when we got them at the table, you can catch them there as well.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Next on the list is Scott Hobbs.
Welcome, Mr. Hobbs.
Hey, good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to take just a few minutes, really just to give you a thank you and an update. I am the senior pastor down at Liberty Christian Fellowship. And we also have the youth camp facility there, where we have been underway in a project that you guys are aware of and have been supportive of, and just wanted to come and give you an update. I want to thank you for your support that you've been throughout this project as it's part of supporting the youth in our community and the difficulties and challenges that they face. And so we're being able to be a part of investing in the next generation with the difficulties that they face and supporting them. We have been underway for a bit now, since about a year ago. We have been operating in phases in our construction project, the facility that we are building on the property, the camp property in Collington. That facility will serve as a dining, much-needed dining facility, meeting space, and recreational space for camp programming and the community, outreaches into the community. And the first phase has been completed, where we were preparing the site and acquiring the materials. The second phase is underway, where we are erecting the steel building there. And the third phase will be where we finish off the inside with the equipment and things that are needed in there as well. And I have just appreciated the encouragement that we've had from the county and just the shared vision to be a support to the needs of our community, as well as we have our mission as a church with the gospel. And I just wanted to share a neat story. Part of our commitment to the county here is to invest as much as we can in local trades and labor with this project. It's a large facility with the paper that you have there. It's about 27,000 square feet. The slab or the foundation of the building was a little bit larger than most of our five main competing concrete companies down here could handle. And we were thinking we were going to have to outsource it. But Dave Stormont, who has been leading on our project, contracting on the project, talked to the five companies that generally compete down here. And instead of outsourcing to Virginia, he was able, all five competing companies came together and poured the foundation of the building together, which was really neat. And we were excited about that. And particularly Phase Three will be mostly all local trade and labor. And so we've just really appreciated the partnership of the community and you guys as well. The Phase Two should be completed by the first or second week of June. Would love for you all, when you get a chance and you happen to detour off the bypass and make your way with great trepidation down into Collington where we are, and just take a look at the progress that has been made because your support has helped make that possible. And we look prayerfully and hopefully to have that project complete by next summer so that that facility will be open for the programming at the camp, as well as the community here as well. So just wanted to give you an update and tell you thank you this morning for your time. And we appreciate you all.
Next is Aida Havel.
Aida Havel, welcome this morning.
Good morning. My name is Aida Havel. I live in Salvo. And the first thing I'd like to say is how incredibly proud I am of the members of the Buxton Civic Association and what they have accomplished in a very short period of time. There are four of them here today. Heather Jeanette, who you just heard from, Wendy Mundon, Jason Hall, and Brian Harris. Although I live in Salvo, their cause is my cause. And I support every single thing that Heather Jeanette said, and I urge you to take that to heart. First, or second after that, I want to thank you for taking the questions that I asked at your last monthly meeting and sending them in a letter to the Army Corps of Engineers and the governor. I appreciate your trust in what I had put together, and I hope that it played some small role in finally getting the Army Corps to move forward. Third, I'm here to implore you today to keep up the pressure. As I understand it, the Corps has only agreed to remove one pipe and perhaps whatever it is attached to. We all know that that is not nearly enough. This cleanup effort is going to take months and perhaps years. While we have the Corps' attention, we, all of us, you and the citizens, must keep the pressure on, whether it is the Corps, the Navy, or the Coast Guard. Fourth, on a different topic, housing. A fellow Dare County citizen approached me unsolicited after the last Housing Task Force meeting and told me that he had approximately 300 acres of land that he was willing to sell to Dare County to build housing and that he had reached out to the county a couple of times and had not heard back. I have not been given permission to share his name, so I will not do that. But I hope you know who I'm referring to. I've also spoken to another Dare County citizen, who I also will not name, but who is in a position to know, who told me, again, unsolicited, that Dare County has plenty of land on which to build. You just need to find the will to start. So again, I would renew the request that many of you have heard from me before, that you buy the 14 acres of land in Rodanthie, where the abandoned water park sits, and begin to start some type of building, seasonal or otherwise, there. Thank you for your time.
Any other public comment this morning? Anyone else like to speak in public comment? Seeing none, is there any public comment from Buxton?
Yes. We have one speaker, Susan Sigmund.
I'm sorry. Please come forward and state your name.
Good morning. My name is Susan Sigmund. And I am a homeowner in Buxton, North Carolina. I want to say good morning to Chairman Woodard, to all the Commissioners, and to the county staff this morning. I do appreciate your time. Is that okay? Are you hearing me?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We can hear.
Okay, thank you. As way of introduction, I would like to let you know that I'm part of a three-generation of people coming to this wonderful area. My father, Virgil Harper, was friends with Commissioner Couch's father Ray. So many years ago, when the early days of NCBBA, I still proudly display the NCBBA number 221 on my beach vehicle. My roots run deep to this island. I am an avid fisherman.
Miss, hold on. Communications, Matt. Do we have anything to improve that? I cannot understand this lady. We're so sorry. For some reason, we've got an audio issue that you're breaking up constantly. We get every other word and it's hard for us to understand what you're trying to get across. And I'm told our IT, he's doing everything he can to correct that. Is there, is there? Yeah, is it frozen? All right, let's reach out to her and reach out to staff down there and get a written statement from her so we can make it public record of the public comment period. Can we do that, Bobby? Have that done?
Always take written comments, so yes.
Her name is Susan Sigmund, and she's been very active.
Sigmund?
S-I-G-M-O-N. She's been very active and singing. She's a legitimate voice.
Yeah. Is her concerns the contamination?
Yes, sir. She lives near there.
All right, well, after this meeting, I will certainly try to get her phone number and recognize, let her know that we understand her concerns and we'll contend.
I'm going to move them to the phone.
Okay. All right, can we hold just a moment? Sorry for the technical problems, folks.
Okay. I don't hear you on the phone. I hung up the cell phone. Hey. Okay. All right, thank you.
Have we got something?
Good morning. Hello there.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Technology's great, isn't it?
I just love every minute of it.
Yes, sir. I'll just say very quickly, my name's Susan Sigmund. I'm a property owner in Buxton. My property, my home is on Cottage Avenue, which is 3/10 of a mile from ground zero. I'm not sure what you heard during my prior comments, but I will say that as a little bit of context, I'm part of three generations that has enjoyed this wonderful island. My father, Virgil Harper, was friends with Commissioner Couch's father, Ray Couch. That was back in the early days of NCBBA. I still proudly display number 221 on my beach vehicle. My roots run deep to this island. I'm an avid fisherman. I'm an avid bird watcher. And I'm also a very concerned rental property owner. So that's by way of context as to who I am. I have two comments, and they really do echo what Chairman I have two comments, and they really do echo what Chairman Woodard and certainly Heather Jeanette indicated with Buxton Civic Association. My first comment is one of thanks and gratitude. I'm sincerely appreciative to Commissioner Couch for taking that early email from me and, you know, making sure that my voice was heard. I want to give thanks certainly to Buxton Civic Association and that great board. What a great bunch of passionate bulldog people. That's a winning combination in my mind. And I also want to give thanks to Superintendent Halleck. You know, that first step that the Army Corps of Engineers is indicating as far as the pipe removal is just that. It is a first step. And again, echoing earlier comments, you know, your advocacy in DC and beyond really did get that ball rolling. And again, I express sincere gratitude for your efforts. But my, and my second comment that I want to make is that we cannot accept anything less than full remediation. The removal of a pipe is not going to cut it. We have to, we as a community have to ask for nothing less than full remediation of that area. I know that there are steps that need to be taken, and I want to make sure that we continue that fight. So that concludes my remarks, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
No further comment.
With that, Mr. Chairman, we'll move on to the item five on the agenda, and this is the Governor's Award for Volunteer Service, and Shannon Glazer's here for that presentation.
Shannon, welcome this morning.
Good morning. I am the program coordinator for the Friends of Youth program, but I'm also the local facilitator for the North Carolina Governor's Volunteer Service Awards. Each year, Dare County residents are able to nominate individuals or groups who have made a significant contribution to our community through their volunteer service, and this year we have nine award recipients. I'll call each person up and read a little bit from their nomination. First, we have Karen DeBelis. Is Karen here? Karen was nominated by Jennifer Albanese. Karen exemplifies dedication and compassion through her volunteerism with both Interfaith Community Outreach and Kitty Hawk United Methodist Church. Karen has been volunteering with ICO for the past eight years, and throughout that time has served in many roles, including data entry, disaster recovery, client outreach, board chair, treasurer, and chair of the Finance Committee. She is always willing to help out wherever she is needed and to get the job done. She also volunteers with Kitty Hawk Methodist Church, serving as their treasurer and managing the church's preschool financial books as well. One of her nominators, Reverend Colin Snyder, states Karen is "an example to all in our community of what retirement can look like" as she selflessly gives of herself for the benefit of the Outer Banks community. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Jenny Flowers. Jenny was nominated by three people: Chris Sawin, Mary Ann Tobaz, and Patty Burexus. Jenny was nominated for her longtime volunteerism with organizations including Dare Arts, Coastal Humane Society, and the Town of Naggs Head. A busy business owner, Jenny has made time to serve on the Board of the Dare Arts for 15 years. She is a past president and the current second vice president. She has played a pivotal role in the renaissance of the organization, which, under her leadership and board membership, has flourished both programmatically and financially. Jenny serves on the Board of the Coastal Humane Society, which helps people who sometimes need help affording various aspects of caring for their pets. She regularly opens her retail store in Naggs Head to special events of the organization like Pet Food distributions, heartworm checks, and span neuter clinics. She also serves on the Naggs Head Arts Committee, championing the importance of the arts in the town's community improvements. Throughout the years, Jenny has also volunteered her time and talents to additional organizations, including Dare Learning Academy, Hotline, Jem Adult Day Services, and Little Pink Houses. As is mentioned in one of her nominations, Jenny doesn't just volunteer with one group, she volunteers for our entire community. Thank you. Lee was nominated by Bonnie Rowe.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine. Lee's volunteer service started over 40 years ago, and he continues daily to serve his community with endless devotion. Lee volunteers his time to help ensure that the needs of the Collington Volunteer Fire Departments are met by seeking donations and grants to help acquire and keep current equipment in good working order. He also helps surrounding fire departments do the same. In 2022, Lee had the vision and passion to establish the Outer Banks 9/11 Memorial Walk to honor the lives lost that day and every day after. Lee orchestrates the event from beginning to end, including acquiring donations from local businesses. Lee also heads the local Toys for Tots drive with relentless passion to ensure that the children of Dare, Currituck, and Camden Counties have a nice Christmas. He seeks out opportunities to minimize expense and maximize donations to support this worthy cause. According to his nominator, Lee is "the definition of a servant heart." His dedication to each and every cause he is involved in displays the deep passion he possesses to serve our community. Thank you, Lee. Next up is Susan Lee. She was unable to be with us this morning. She was nominated by Molly McGuinness. Just going to read her a little bit about her real quick. Susan has been a volunteer with Children and Youth Partnership since 2016. She continues to volunteer consistently through her work with Triple P Positive Parenting Program and Be Resilient OBX, helping Children Youth Partnership work towards its mission of helping children, youth, and families thrive in Dare County. Since 2016, Susan has documented nearly 800 hours of volunteer service. She's committed to mentoring and educating children, youth, families, and educators in Dare County on brain development, parenting strategies, and more. As a member of the Breaking Through Task Force representing Be Resilient OBX, Susan has dedicated her time to help break the stigmas and raise awareness of mental health and substance use issues. These are just two examples of how Susan shares her time and talents volunteering for Children and Youth Partnership. Susan Lee is a name that is well-recognized and respected throughout the community. She has truly dedicated her life trying to make the world a better place for children and parents in Dare County. Now, we have Paul and Kathy Lesowitz. Paul and Kathy were nominated by Taylor McConnell. Paul and Kathy have been familiar faces at the North Carolina Aquarium in Roanoke Island for more than 20 years. During this time, the husband-and-wife team have engaged with thousands of visitors at the aquarium's touch tanks. Kathy can be found at the stingray touch pool, showing visitors that these fascinating fish are safe to touch and helping to build empathy towards our native animals. Paul, meanwhile, mans the invertebrate touch pools, embellishing the story of native shells to show visitors that shells were once a living animal. Paul and Kathy are also, sorry, Paul and Kathy also often help out with sensory nights where the aquarium partners were surfing for autism, and are also well-known for their costumes at previous aquarium Halloween events. Thank you, Paul and Kathy. Thank you very much. Up next is Lisa Mine rich. Lisa was nominated by Kelly Lambroff. Lisa has a huge heart for seniors in our community. She works as an occupational therapist and uses those skills in her volunteer pursuits, teaching a weekly improvement-through-movement class at the Thomas A. Baum Senior Center. She helps attendees with balance, flexibility, and range of motion while sharing humor and overall care and concern for each participant's well-being. Lisa also volunteers for Meals on Wheels. In addition to delivering the warm and delicious meal, it's an opportunity for her to check on and brighten the day of some neighbors who aren't able to leave their homes very often. In addition to working with seniors, Lisa is also dedicated to protecting our beaches. She volunteers with the Town of Southern Shore Civic Association to help stabilize our shoreline by planting beach grasses. Thank you, Lisa. Next up, we have Marvin Fred Parker. Good morning. Fred was nominated by Bill Walker. Fred has been a volunteer firefighter for more than 50 years. He helped start the Wantues Fire Department and later joined with the Mania Fire Department in 1974 to form the Roanoke Island Volunteer Fire Department. Over the years, he has held almost every position in the fire department with the exception of chief and chaplain. He has given his time and dedication for over 50 years by helping the department any way he possibly can, from leading the crews into dangerous situations and ensuring they come out safely, to helping to train the next generation of firefighters. In 2023, Fred was presented the Order of the Nozzle, an award that the department gives out as a symbol of lifetime achievement and dedication to helping to protect and serve our community. Thank you, Fred. Next up, we have Colette Walker. Colette was nominated by Elaine Reed. Colette has organized and led activities for local chapters of Monarch as a ministry at Kitty Hawk United Methodist Church since 2016. Monarch provides day programs for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities, affording them an opportunity to foster creative expression and community engagement. Kitty Hawk Methodist has a long history of providing monthly activities for Monarch Lighthouse Club of Currituck, as well as seasonal activities for the Monarch Beach Club of Mania. Colette also leads outreach and advocacy efforts for local group homes for adults living with intellectual disabilities. These group homes were hit especially hard by the pandemic as residents were confined to the property for the duration. Colette's volunteer leadership gave church members and their larger community the opportunity to provide Christmas gifts and dinner, to donate funds for basketball hoop, outdoor furniture, board games, and more, and to prepare dinner deliveries throughout the year. Colette's tenacity in maintaining contact with Monarch participants throughout the pandemic to this current time has enabled fellow church volunteers to build years-long, meaningful relationships with Monarch clients and their caregivers. Thank you, Colette. Our final recipient is Debbie Swick. Come see her again. Come on down. Debbie Swick was nominated by Wanda Sidersen, Latisa Head, and Lisa Mine rich. Debbie is actually a medallion recipient for North Carolina. She was one of the 25. Each year, the state recognizes the top 25 volunteers. Medallion award recipients are honored at an annual recognition ceremony in Raleigh. I'll read a little bit about Debbie so you can see why she was chosen as top 25. Debbie Swick is a volunteer with an insatiable desire to give back to her community. She works tirelessly and with a passion for many organizations throughout Dare. These organizations include the Southern Shore Civic Association, Chickahawc Homeowners Association, NEST, Better Beaches OBX, Beach Food Pantry, KDH Trash Attack, Mammal Stranding Network, and the Ban Balloon Release North Carolina Organization. Debbie can be found almost every day at a beach access that she has adopted through the Southern Shore Civic Association. She keeps the area clean, tidy, and attractive for residents and visitors alike. She also helps the town put a personal touch on town signs and entranceways by decorating these public areas. Her commitment to civic beautification extends to her neighborhood as she helps with similar efforts throughout the Chickahawc Homeowners Association. Debbie has also volunteered at the Beach Food Pantry throughout the years, assisting those with food insecurities. Since Debbie is bilingual, her services are invaluable at the pantry. During planting season, Debbie joins the efforts of Better Beaches OBX to plant seagrass and sea oats to help protect fragile area dunes from erosion. In keeping with her passion for helping to make her community a beautiful place to live, Debbie participates in beach cleanups throughout the northern beaches, whether on her own or at her adopted beach access. She's also a volunteer with two organizations dedicated to helping marine animals: NEST, where she babysits sea turtle nests and provides education to beachgoers, and the Mammal Stranding Network, where she stays with stranded animals awaiting the arrival of a marine biologist to determine the best course of action. Debbie's passion for a healthy environment for humans, as well as land and sea creatures, has driven her to seek a ban on the release of helium balloons. She attends events and speaks to groups to educate on the dire effects that helium balloons can have, not just on our coastal community, but elsewhere as well. Debbie has been gathering signatures on a petition calling for a ban on the release of helium balloons to protect, to present to our state government in an effort to create new legislation to protect our environment. And if all of those endeavors aren't enough, Debbie also takes time to bake Swickerdoodles for local organization meetings.
Put me on the spot.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Congratulations, everyone.
Chairman, that brings us to item six on the agenda. This is the Dare Arts celebrates 50 years on the Outer Banks in 2025, and Jessica Sands is here for that presentation.
Welcome this morning, Jessica.
Good morning. Thank you.
Yeah, give you one second.
Sure. Hi. Okay, fabulous. Thanks.
Okay, Jessica.
Thank you. Chairman Woodard, Vice Chairman Overman, commissioners, county staff, thank you to Ms. Foley for all your help this week. Thank you. My name is Jessica Sands, and I'm here representing Dare Arts. I became a board member in 2017. I became a program director in 2020, and I've been the executive director since 2021. Today, we have board, staff, volunteers, artists, members here today to show some support for this presentation, and we'll carry on with that. So Dare Arts' mission is to encourage the arts through advocacy, enrichment, and opportunity. I want to thank you today for the opportunity to share with you and the community, most of whom left, but that's okay, a bit about Dare Arts, our history, our mission, and, most importantly, our plans for the 50th anniversary coming up in 2025. All right, cool. Today's presentation is a tasting of sorts. It's not a comprehensive list of what we do, but I did want to pull a few historical highlights to talk about today. In 1975, a group of compassionate and caring citizens gathered in the home of Molly Fearing to set about founding an organization that would introduce thousands of schoolchildren and adults alike to music, dance, theater, painting, sculpture, poetry, literature. And the organization would originally be called the Sea and Sounds Arts Council. The next, over the next 20 years, the name would change to Dare County Arts Council. the name would change to Dare County Arts Council. The nonprofit would be established, the first employee hired, and the first office space opened. 2010 was a turning point for the organization when they worked together with Dare County to renovate and establish the historic 1904 courthouse as in downtown Manio, as the new home for Dare County Arts Council. So we owe a huge thank you to you and all who came before for this incredible gesture indicating the importance and value of the arts in our community. And as such, Dare Arts has continued to flourish in that same building. There, many may not know what we do and who we serve. We, it crosses a bunch of, in addition to serving the whole community, that we serve several targeted groups in citizens. And the courthouse is now the main home to our juried gallery, including the Vault Gallery, which has monthly rotating exhibits, and the upstairs courtroom gallery, which is, in addition to showcasing exhibits, an active art space for workshops, classes, demos, live theater, music performances, literary arts discussion, kids camps, soon-to-be dance classes, and film screenings, to name a few. I'm going to highlight just two of our big exhibits of the year. These are the cornerstones of our year, honoring two people who have given so much to our community. The Frank Stick Memorial Art Show is the longest-running visual arts exhibit in the county and is almost as old as Dare Arts. Next year will be the 47th year of that exhibit. And just this past Sunday, just two days ago, we joined forces with the Fearing family to open the 27th exhibit in honor of Molly Fearing. Our gallery does house the work of well over 100 juried artists whose work includes all of the mediums I mentioned before, and more so. In the last five years alone, we have crossed almost $800,000 in art sales, the majority of which goes right back to the artists to continue their work. Performing artists are also celebrated at Dare Arts. We support musicians, dancers, and filmmakers through various programs such as Rock the Cape, our Cape Hatteras event, and the Surpholoris Film Festival, which is going on 13 years. But First Fridays probably best exemplify what we do the best. Business owners, nonprofits, artists, visitors, and locals alike come together to experience the joy of art. Live music and exhibit openings fill the town. And our courtyard is another spot where the arts come alive for outdoor art installations. This slide shows last month's flyer. And with the support from the Town of Manio, we're able to bring new and interesting performing arts experiences to the community, including unique ones like this dance and drum troupe from Ghana. As I mentioned earlier, one of the most important parts of the founding of Dare Arts is programming for youth. Art Rages is probably our most anticipated community event of the year, and we're proud to say that this Saturday we will celebrate the 35th Annual Festival. Hundreds of families will descend on Doughty Park for art, music, dance, and fun. And these activities include mediums that the children might not have exposure to, including clay, glass, metalwork, jewelry making, and even culinary arts. After attending Children and Youth Partnership State of the Child earlier this year, we realized that we needed to do even more. And we're happy to announce that we're going to be hosting four different summer camps this year in the arts. The power of art is the heart and soul of our organization. It started with a few artists who volunteered their time, but thanks to a community benefits grant from Outer Banks Health, we now have a pool of dozens of artists who plan and execute art experiences for underserved groups, including those listed here. If you've ever had the pleasure of participating in any of these, you know how special and amazing they are. And then, over the last few years, we've added new and different groups to serve every year. Perhaps one of the proudest things that we've been able to do is really serve as a community-based organization. You can see this list. This is not even a complete list, but just a list of people we've partnered with over the last few years, whether it's teaming up with the Brian Cultural Series in Dare County Schools to host a Latin Ballet residency for all elementary schools, or exhibiting a P. Island Preservation Society exhibit during Black History Month, or working with Outer Banks Forever to bring arts into our parks, or hosting the Peace Garden Project's first-ever Environmental Film Festival. Each collaboration reminds us how integral the arts are to every, the way we move through the world, and especially here in Dare County. And that brings us to next year. We have a three-pronged approach to the year, including more than 25 touchpoints planned along the way. And I'm just going to highlight a few here. In an effort to honor our past, we plan to present some special awards, create a traveling retrospective, and host a celebration to honor and thank all those came before and are still here today doing, helping us do what we do. We plan to elevate our present by leveling up our events that we already do, that were previously mentioned, and including Outer Banks Veterans Week, Dare Arts Pride Project, and the Outer Banks Film Society. And we hope to cement our future by hosting new and exciting events, including a plein air event, special exhibits that honor the power of art and our ties to the fishing industry. And so that people know the arts extend from dock to hatteras, we're planning some self-guided tours for murals, sculptures, private art studios and galleries up and down the Outer Banks. New collaborations are already in the works, including one with Jockeys Ridge, who will also celebrate their 50th anniversary next year as well. Most importantly, we want the year to be a celebration of our mission. To reiterate that is to encourage the arts through advocacy. We continue to advocate for funding for the arts, for artists, and for the underrepresented and marginalized people in our community. Through enrichment, where we hope to continue to inspire young people to appreciate the arts, offer community events for everyone to enjoy, and through opportunity, continuing to support artists so they can show and sell their work at galleries and exhibitions or perform at various events. We hope to open doors and provide experiences for those who may not have the means to do so. If you did not know, that we are the designated county arts organization under the North Carolina Arts Council. North Carolina has one of the most robust arts council networks in the country. Not only are we designated as the county arts leader, but we are also a regional arts leader of a six-county region. We have a proven track record to deliver what we set out to do, and we truly believe in our mission. Our proposed budget and any contribution, this slide, sorry, this slide shows our proposed budget. And any contribution you choose to make will be a worthwhile investment for 2025. Finally, I want to remind everyone that art brings people together. It reminds us that we're friends and neighbors. And I want to thank you for your time today and consideration to support Dare Arts this year and for many years to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jessica.
Chairman, item seven on the agenda is a proclamation for EMS Week, May 19 through 25. And Jenny Collins is here for that presentation.
Good morning again.
Yes, ma'am. Welcome again.
Before I read the proclamation, I just want to thank the board for your support for the EMS department. It is nice that you understand and appreciate the work that the EMS department does and the investments in our equipment and our buildings. Makes our work much more possible and easy. So thank you very much for all the support. EMS Week is May 19 through the 25. It's coming up later in the month. And I'd like to go ahead and read the proclamation for you. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services is the community's medical care safety net, fills gaps and provides important out-of-hospital care and performs life-saving and time-critical interventions. And whereas emergency medical service personnel serve our community on the front lines, often with personal sacrifices of being away from their family on nights, weekends, and holidays, in all types of weather environments, and face numerous personal risk and threats to ensure the community receives the best care possible. And whereas the emergency medical service system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, administrators, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of emergency medical service teams engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize and value the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. And whereas with this year's national theme for the 50th anniversary of Emergency Medical Services Week, honoring our past and forging our future. Now therefore be it resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners in recognition of this event do hereby proclaim the week of May 19 through the 25, 2024, as Emergency Medical Services Week.
Motion to adopt.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House to adopt the proclamation. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you very much.
Chairman, item nine on the agenda is a proclamation declaring June 19 be named as the World Elder's Abuse Awareness Day. And if your permission, I'll read that.
Skip one. Skip one. Go to eight.
Eight, I'm sorry. That is what I, number eight is a proclamation for Older Americans Month 2024.
That would be all of us sitting up here, Bobby.
Me too. With your permission, I'll read that proclamation. Says, whereas May is Older Americans Month, a time for us to recognize and honor Dare County's older adults and their immense influence on every facet of American society. And whereas through their wealth of life experience and wisdom, older adults guide our younger generations and carry forward abundant cultural, historical knowledge. And whereas older Americans improve our communities through intergenerational relationships, community service, civic engagement, and many other activities. And whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently. And whereas Dare County must ensure that older Americans have the resources and support needed to stay involved in their communities, reflecting our commitment to inclusivity and connectedness. And therefore, we, the Dare County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Older Americans Month. This year's theme, Powered by Connection, emphasizes the profound impact of meaningful interactions and social connections on the well-being and health of older adults in our community. We call upon all residents to join in recognizing the contributions of our older citizens and promoting programs and activities that foster connections, inclusion, and support for older adults this the seventh day of May 2024.
Mr. Chairman, as the ranking elder on the board, I would like to move that we adopt this resolution.
All right. Motion on the floor by the vice chair.
As the youngest member on this board, I would second it.
Seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion?
Yeah. Why did he have to point that out?
Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Now, the one I skipped is the proclamation for June 15 to be named as World Elder's Abuse Awareness Day. With your permission, I'll read that as well.
Please.
Whereas older adults deserve to be treated with respect and dignity to enable them to serve as leaders, mentors, volunteers, and vital participating members of our communities. And whereas in 2006, the International Network for the Prevention of Elder Abuse in support of the United Nations International Plan of Action proclaimed today to recognize the significance of elder abuse as a public health and human rights issue. And whereas 2024 marks the 18th Annual World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, its recognition will promote a better understanding of abuse and neglect of older adults. And whereas the National Center on Elder Abuse, Public Morale Commission Area Agency on Aging, and Dare County recognize the importance of taking actions to raise awareness, prevent, and address elder abuse. And whereas as our population lives longer, we are presented with an opportunity to think about our collective needs and future as a nation. And whereas ageism and social isolation are major causes of elder abuse in the United States. And whereas recognizing that it is up to all of us to ensure that proper social structures exist so people can retain community and societal connections, reducing the likelihood of abuse. And whereas preventing abuse of older adults through maintaining and improving social supports, like senior citizens, human services, and transportation will allow everyone to continue to live as independently as possible and contribute to the life and vibrancy of our communities. And whereas there is justice, there can be no abuse. Therefore, NCEA urges all people to restore justice by honoring older adults. And whereas, join us in engaging and empowering movement, putting an end to abuse. Now therefore, the Dare County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims June 15, 2024, as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Dare County, encourage all of our communities to recognize and celebrate older adults and their ongoing contributions to the success and vitality of our country. This the seventh day of May 2024.
Pleasure to the board.
Move to adopt.
Motion on the floor to adopt by Vice Chairman Overman.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bassnight. Any further comments? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. We're going to take a 10-minute break. We'll call the Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order, turn it over to the county manager.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, that brings us to item 10 on the agenda. This is the Public Health Opioid Settlement Fund Proposals for Fiscal Year 2025. And Roxanne Ballinger is here to present that to you.
Good morning, Roxanne, and welcome.
Good morning. I'm just waiting to see if the, there it is. Okay, great. Thank you, Commissioners. And I'd like to start off just recognizing that today is Fentanyl Overdose Awareness Day. Just kind of coincidental. But fentanyl is a major killer in drug overdoses. Over 85% of the deaths that we've had here in Dare County are attributed to fentanyl.
Roxanne, do we know where this fentanyl is coming from? It's me. Sorry, Roxanne. Do we know where it's coming from? Do authorities know where the fentanyl is coming from?
Well, you know what? I'm not the expert on that, and the sheriff's office and law enforcement probably would be able to answer that question.
Okay. Nobody knows. Okay. You can tell my temper is short. It's 85% of the deaths, and we don't know where it comes from.
No, I understand that. Yeah, I do.
I have an idea where it comes from. I was looking to see if you would agree with me.
Mexico.
Yeah, it's coming across the southern border.
Yeah.
So we're pretty sure? Okay.
Okay, I'd like to present the opioid settlement funding plan to the Commissioners today. We are embarking on year three of our opioid settlement funds, which means we have about 15 years left of funding that's going to be coming in. The Saving Lives Task Force Board reviewed this plan. And it's, you know, it's about the priorities in Dare County. And does it address every single little thing? It doesn't. But we feel these are the major priorities that we have going on in our county. These next couple of slides are basically a review for those that are not familiar with. We had a, you know, historic $26 billion agreement reached. And that happened in July 2021. North Carolina funds, 85% of the opioid settlement funds went to local governments in North Carolina. North Carolina developed a memorandum of agreement to address treatment, recovery, support, and harm reduction with the opioid settlement funds. This slide has been updated from the past two years. We've received Wave 1 and Wave 2 funds. So now we are at $6.2 million approximately. So we're, like I said, we're three years into this, so we have about 15 years left. This next slide, initially, this was not in the presentation, but we added it back. You know, we are You know, we are getting the waves of money in now. And one thing that we need to do is we need to plan for the future. We need to look down the road. And as you can see from this chart, you know, funds decrease as we move through the next 15 years. Our finance officer at Health and Human Services, she basically manages these funds for us. And we've talked about it, you know, sustainability and how are we going to maintain certain things that we have planned in our opioid settlement fund budget. And so we have come up with a dollar amount that we can plan on every single year for the next 15 years. And it's approximately $370,000 every year that we could budget and plan from every year for the next 15 years. Now, that's subject to, it's a little variable, but that's a tentative budget that we have come up with. And it is subject to change, like I said. But as you can see in the later years, you know, we barely would have enough money to cover what we're doing now with the two positions and funding naloxone. So we are planning to budget in the years coming, $370,000, yes.
That would presuppose that the continued trend remains as is and doesn't decline. As in, gosh, overdoses, drug usage, abuse might go down.
Exactly.
Wouldn't that be an outstanding goal and therefore reduce the need for the funds?
That would be great.
Okay.
Yes, definitely.
Roxanne, what's the significance in the jump in 2023?
You know, some of these pharmaceutical companies, they had new ones that came on board after the initial settlement, that they decided, hey, they're going to come after us legally, we're going to go ahead and settle out. So it has grown a little, the companies that have settled out. And some of them too, and one in particular, I don't remember which one it was, but that company decided, we're going to go ahead and pay out. We want to, I guess, get it off our books. And so that's why you see that jump right there.
Mr. Chairman, there are other ones still pending as well that aren't reflected here. So those numbers could change with additional revenues down the road as those others settle out.
And Bobby, by the same token, are there not some companies who are now litigating to try to get those funds done away with to not have to pay?
The ones that there... There are multiple companies that the group is going after, and it's called mass tort litigation. And they've settled with some, hence the funding that you see on the screen. They have some that are in settlement negotiations now that are, as Roxanne said, they're smaller. The numbers aren't big like the initial ones are. And then there are, I think, one or two that are saying, you know, we're not settling, we don't think we owe it, and we're going to have a trial. They may or may not, if they win, then there'll be additional funds that come out of that. If they lose, then the companies don't have to pay. And so there's some of those out there as well. As those funds occur, as we get new revenues, they get fed into the state. The state has an MOA with all the counties that determine how they get that money distributed. And then we get our share of those distributed funds with each settlement that occurs or each verdict that occurs going forward.
The significance of this chart is basically to show that the funds are front-loaded. And that's what Roxanne meant by we're getting some, let's say, heavy distributions in the beginning, but if you look at it, it tapers down to $150,000, $152,000 at the end. But we need more than that to fund the things that we're funding now. And to come up with an average, which is about $370,000, is what we feel like right now with what we know, that we can maintain as an average for every year going forward for 15 years, knowing what we know right now with regard to the funding that's coming in. So that you don't spend all your money upfront, and then you get it to end and you don't have enough to do the things that need to be done. So that's the reason for establishing an average based upon what we know now on the funding that's given in this chart.
Vice Chairman, again, that presupposes no change in trend, addicts, overdose deaths, abuse, as opposed to, as you can tell, I get a little irritated on this topic because I want to see us make some progress. I want to see the funding used in hope for God prevention, so that people, great people like you Roxanne, aren't facing this 10 years down the road with the same level of need, the same level of people dying, suffering, what have you, and that this money is put to use in a way that God stems it, Wally. I know you've been instrumental in the Saving Lives Task Force. I look at you two and I think, my God, these two are just giving everything they've got and the tide continues to flow. And when I look out 10 years and see the funds decline, I'm thinking, great, because we're not going to have the need. But you're saying, we're likely going to have more need.
I hope you're right. I hope that's the case. But we got a plan on the worse.
I'm preaching, I'm a stop.
We got a plan on the worse.
Next, we did a stakeholder survey that was put out there to get some feedback from The next slide is response to local substance use disorder treatment programs. That has been a very clear and very direct feedback from the community and stakeholders that treatment is important and people want that. Next is social determinants of health. Social determinants of health are important because if somebody doesn't have a way to get to their treatment, they don't have a way to get to their job, then they're not going to be able to support themselves. All these things feed into substance use disorder. 80% of the respondents felt like that was a good use of funds. Next is naloxone kits and fentanyl test kits. 87.8% felt like that was a good use of funds. We can't function without naloxone. If people aren't alive, then you can't do anything with them. And this is definitely a must, a must that we have to do. Dare County Detention Services, working with those that are incarcerated. Again, another extremely important, high, high percentage of those that are in our jail, in our detention center, have mental health and substance use disorders. And we have to address that with reentry programs, getting them help and counseling so they can get off to the right start. Next, just some feedback and general comments. Prevention programs in the schools, targeting youth, prevention programs for adults, public awareness campaigns. Transportation is always in there. And treatment, treatment for youth, family counseling, and programs. So this is our proposed budget that the Saving Lives Task Force Board voted on, that we came up with. Continue to support the peer support specialist position. That is a hugely important position. Jesse Ruby fills that position right now. And he has just made leaps and bounds. The amount of naloxone that we have gotten out in the community over the last year has almost tripled, which is huge. And new relationships in areas, people putting naloxone out there for people to come get them with no questions asked, no stigma. And that position has been huge. Recovery Court Case Manager, again, another very important position. Recovery Court has, it continues to grow in their numbers every year to continue to support what they're doing. $100,000 for naloxone and test strips for community distribution. We also give that out to law enforcement too. Actually, anybody who wants it and needs it, we give it to. I have, you know, we backed down on that number a little bit from last year. We do get shipments from North Carolina Health and Human Services of naloxone. The only problem with that is that it's unpredictable. I get an email and they say, it's coming, you know, and we get the shipment. So it's hard to predict that. So we did back that down from 150 to 100,000 for this coming year. Social determinants of health, $12,000. Last year, we budgeted $10,000, and we have just about spent that now. That money is being used heavily for gas and fuel reimbursement for transportation. It has, I'm sorry.
I can certainly understand that. Anybody fill up their tank lately? That money would be gone in a heartbeat Roxanne.
Yeah, yeah. So we are supporting entities to reimburse them for their gas travel. With that, also two deposits for Oxford House, bus tickets. We paid for one plane ticket actually for someone. Room in the inn, we have funded drug testing supplies when they're in season. So the majority of that social determinants of health money is being used for gas reimbursement because of the transportation. So we are increasing that by $2,000 for this upcoming year. Linkage to care, as I mentioned earlier, out of the Dare County Detention Center, they have great programs going on in their licensed personnel counseling, mental health counseling, substance use counseling, and linking them so they'll have a good start when they do get out of that jail. Last year, we allocated $50,000 and we are proposing $50,000 again for them to help continue that work. Community initiatives. Again, the feedback was very heavy treatment. They wanted people to have money for the local treatment. Changing Tides is a lot of that funding that went to. They completely used their money right off the bat last year to pay for tuition. And to help pay for tuition for people that are going into Dare Challenge. Go ahead.
Momentarily, the $100,000, the biggest item on the list, naloxone and test strips, I'm looking down at Vice Chairman Overman too. Do we know the approximate cost of one naloxone kit?
Yeah.
How much is one?
It's $41 a kit right now.
So this would imply...
And that has gone down. It has dropped over the last year, which supports dropping the money that's going toward it.
This would imply 2,500. Let's abandon test strips for a moment. If we just did naloxone, that's 2,500 naloxone kits. Is that right? Is that too much? $40?
No, that's probably about right.
2,500.
That's... And sometimes you're using more than one kit on one person.
That's 8% of the population of Dare County, 7%. 7%.
And the recommendations that are coming down from Health and Human Services as a best practice is to give each person, not one kit. You know, if somebody wants a, I want a naloxone kit, you give them two or three kits.
Okay, so my 7% would be wrong. That would be more kits per person. Thank God. Okay, that's something. Thanks, thank you Roxanne.
What happens is that particularly, and this is getting back to the fentanyl, if someone has taken something that has fentanyl in it, it's unusual for one naloxone treatment to bring them back. It takes multiple of those. And those are like on the aerosol, which everybody is using now, is the latest way of administering it. Is it four milligrams? It's four milligrams. And it just takes, it just takes multiple shots of the four milligrams to bring somebody who's under...
I was just fishing for, how many people are we treating? And with your answer, it's fewer than what I thought because multiple kits are used in each instance. Okay, thanks.
In the community initiatives, we are proposing to give $45,000 to Changing Tides to help those that cannot afford to get into Changing Tides for treatment. And $20,000 to Dare Challenge to continue to support tuition payments for people to get into that program. And that is the end of the presentation. I hope that you will support this plan. Ultimately, this board decides what moves forward with this plan. And if you do approve, the next steps will be that I will go back and create the final resolution. That will come before you next month, and then it will be submitted to the state.
Motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman to approve the plan that's presented. It's been seconded by the Vice Chairman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thanks for all your hard work Roxanne.
Thank you.
Good stuff. Before we move forward, County Manager, and out of respect for our Board of Education Board members and the superintendent that are here, I'd like to entertain a motion to move item 15 and 16 up ahead of item 11.
So moved.
It's a motion and seconded by Commissioner Ross and Vice Chairman Overman. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. So item 15 is announced.
Hey, were you ready with item 15? Capital project ordinance for Dare County Schools, Early College. Do you want to do that one ahead of, do you want to do, before we do the ordinance here, what the early college design?
Yeah, let's, well, let's flip them.
We got to have the ordinance to do, you have to have the project ordinance before you can approve the contract. So if you'll go ahead with that day.
No, we're going to 15.
Item 15.
And...
And having the ordinance is the paperwork we need. It doesn't mean you have to do anything.
That's right.
You just have the ordinance in place, right?
That's true. We can just get rid of it, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, Dustin did this for me. I was looking for him. But it's just the architectural contract for Oakley Collier with their set percentage fee based on the existing contract we have with them for projects and services. And the source of funds will be a future bond issue sometime in '25, depending upon the design time. So it's a sort, revenue side is bond proceeds and the expense side is the architectural contract.
So...
I'm moved to approve.
You're asking us to approve the county capital project ordinance series 2025 V LOBs, correct?
Yes, sir.
And there is a motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross.
Second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Couch. Floor is open for discussion.
Does this ordinance tie us into a contract for the early college?
No.
Well, he said yes. He said no.
He said yes. No, it, so this is the ordinance in place. We now have a project ordinance that we can put revenue in and we can spend money from. But until you approve the spending, which is the contract, then you've not exercised the authority you're just given in the ordinance. So there's another step before you spend any money. So this, again, gets our bookwork in place. If you choose to go forward, we have the ordinance, we can go forward. If you choose not to, then it's no harm, no value.
So it's not binding?
It's not, it's binding.
Binding for spending the money?
It's just the ordinance that says, if you do the early college, we have a place in the budget now to spend the money.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none. Those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Right. And then item 16, to your question, Commissioner Bassnight, is the contract with Oakley Collier to allow them to do the design... with Oakley Collier to allow them to do the design service? And, well, we're going to move into the issues that you all have, but the contract is, if we get that far, the contract is a standard contract. There's nothing different than the contract we've done with them before. And so it's in approvable form if you choose to move forward with the project after you've heard all the information that you want. I just wanted to get that in front of you now, so the contract isn't, isn't going to be our issue. With that said, the contract timing is important. If we're going to do an Early College, then, and we're going to do it on the schedule that was talked about at the Capital Improvement Committee meeting and what you all had approved earlier to move forward with, then they have to start now. They can't have it ready to go and get everything built by that '26 school year if we don't start and allow them to go to work now. So there is some urgency to whatever our decision is going to be. With those two preambles, I'll go back to the next preamble that I asked the superintendent to come up, if you might please. When we had our Capital Improvement Committee meeting, we had some discussions with the superintendent and members of the school board about needs of the schools and where they have, what they needed and all that. Our concern at that time was that if we spent this $25 million that we were talking about for the Early College, that it would use up all the capital funds until the '27, '28, '28 timeframe. And that's FY '28. And so we're, we'd be three or four years out before we could do any more projects because we would have used up all the capacity of the lottery funds and the sales tax funds that are dedicated to schools. We were told at that meeting that there weren't any projects on a shorter timeframe than that that would need funding, and on that premise, we moved forward. Some confusion has now been created because we then, a month or two later, we get a longer term capital plan that has another, like $29 million of capital items in that plan. The concerns that each of you, I'm looking down, I think every one of you has come and talked to me about it at least once, are that, hey, we didn't think there were any things out there. So the question becomes, are they out there or are they not out there? And they are, there are capital items that you've got the list, you see what they are. The question for us is, is priority of the Board of Education, what priority do they have these things in? And then the second thing is timing. What timing do they have? If these are things that don't need to be done until '28, then there's going to be, if things stay as they are, if the lottery fund is funded the way it's currently funded, if the sales tax revenues run, on average, what they've been running, if the legislature doesn't change anything about how they allocate those funds, then in '28, there'll be sufficient funds to accomplish all of these goals, even if you did the Early College now. And so we ask superintendent to come forward to sort of go through those, go through the timing with you, to make sure that you all are comfortable, that we have our priorities in order, that we've got the things in order that the Board of Education is telling us that they need, and that we've got it on a timing cycle that meets the availability of those funds. If all of those things are worked out after you've heard from the superintendent, then we would be in a position to do the next step with the Early College, which would be to approve the design contract. If, if after all that, you're not satisfied, then you've got to make a decision whether you're going to enter the contract or not. So with that stage set, I'll turn it over to you.
Waiting for the sky to fall here. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for letting me come talk to you today. What I've tried to do is go back and give you a history of my understanding of where this has come from. Understanding that I've been here now about a year and a half, a little over a year. And so a lot of this information predates me, so I had to go back and find it myself. During the interview process, and just after the interview process for the superintendent of Dare County Schools, Board of Education told me that they wanted an Early College and wanted us to move in that direction. So I began moving in that direction. I was told at the time that the Twyford facility across the street from us here would be available to use for the Early College building. And at that time, you know, we began discussions with the county about the possibility of having an Early College. We have, I guess the best way to put it, this is not a new idea. I didn't come up with this idea. It was inherited, and we've moved forward with it. Our administration has been very open and transparent from the very beginning about our process. We've been doing presentations for the Board of Education in public meetings. We've done presentations for you in public meetings, as well as joint meetings with the county. We published articles on all of our local media, Outer Banks Voice, Coastal Times, Channel 3 has covered it, as well as our social media and our website. So every step of the way, we've attempted to let everybody know where we were, and this is a long process. We actually began our application about this time last year. We really felt we needed, from the very beginning, we needed to be able to publicize this because, in all honesty, there's about 20 years of anti-Early College propaganda in Dare County, and we felt it necessary to sort of combat some of that propaganda. We're continuing to do that. We've started our public meetings, and all of this has been graduated to more involve the public in what's going on in our planning. Our administration, with the county officials, went over to the Twyford facility with our maintenance folks and their maintenance folks to inspect the Twyford facility last spring, I believe is when it was. I think some of those were actually covered by the media as well. I think Channel 3 actually covered one of those. After walking through that building and sort of getting our minds around the possibility of what could be done in those buildings and paint, HVAC that needed to be done, the technology needed to be upgraded, I think the county reached out to an architect to come walk through the building and give us some recommendations on getting that facility usable. The firm came back with essentially, one of the buildings was going to be usable and the other one they were recommending demolition. And those costs would be somewhere in the vicinity of $17 million. So, thinking of the $17 million and being good stewards, and y'all had just built the COA facility, you had an idea of what a building on that campus or similar building would cost. And so in our discussions, it went something like this. We can take a 60-year-old building and renovate it and tear down a building next to it and build something else for $17 million. Or we can build a new building for roughly $21 million. And at that point, I said to Bobby, if we're going to build a new building, why would we build it on the Twyford property when we could actually build it on COA's campus if they were open to that? And that opened those doors to discussions. All of this has been shared publicly. At no time during these discussions did, and again, maybe my misinterpretation, we didn't include this in a capital improvement plan discussion. Yes, it's capital improvement, no argument there. But it wasn't a plan that was tied to our capital improvement plan in Dare County. And so when we started talking about being able to use the educational lottery funding that the county had access to that can only be used for school construction, in my mind, that was separate from our capital improvement plan and the things that we have to do on an ongoing basis or needs that we see in the future. If you take a look at our current proposed capital improvement plan, each year of that capital improvement plan that we present to you consists of about $2 million. We try to keep it around there so it's not a huge drain, and you have an idea of what we're spending each year and what you're allocating each year, except in this year's capital improvement plan. And it's one of those Sesame Street things. I say this all the time. One of these things doesn't belong with the other because each year is about $2 million, and then there's this year, three years out, that's $29 million. The reason that year is $29 million is because when we started developing that plan, we became aware that at around that point, and Bobby just mentioned this, and like I said, Dave and Bobby are much better at this discussion than I am about that funding. But at that point, the funds that you use to pay for, I guess, First Flight High School will be exhausted. You'll be, it'll be paid off. So you have access to additional funds in that year. So what we did with our capital improvement plan is, in that year, we went back and we said, here's a list of things that we see on the horizon. Not that we were asking you to give us $29 million that year, but here are things on the horizon. And the way I've dealt with capital improvement plans in the past, and any of you that have worked with these probably know this, so I'm just saying it for everyone else, the real actual on a capital improvement plan is next year. Anything out beyond that gets moved or could be moved anywhere in that plan. So when we listed that $29 million in that year, we didn't anticipate it happening that year, but we saw that being moved out and spread out, again, trying to be transparent, and at this point, maybe too transparent, and letting you know what we were looking at down the road, some needs that we had identified. If you look at the things, for example, next year, in the next two years, the kinds of things that you're seeing on the plan over the next two years are really catch-up maintenance items. We're sort of in the crunch of doing both. We're catching up on some stuff that probably should have been done that hadn't been kept up on, but at the same time, we're looking to the future. So when I'm talking about catch-up items, I'm talking about roofs, painting, chillers, HVAC, gym floor redone, just usual maintenance things that has to take place. We all remember last year what happened when we were replacing the chillers at First Flight Elementary and First Flight Middle School, and the parts didn't come in on time. And we don't want to get in that situation. So we're trying to lay that stuff out and get it taken care of over the next couple years that, before we get to that big list. As we began, after we started talking about the Early College and we began doing our budget meetings with our directors and our staff for this year, our maintenance director, Mr. Adam, Ian Adams, came to me and said, you know, when Cape Hatteras was renovated, when they redid the building down there at Cape Hatteras Secondary School, the only thing they didn't do was the cafeteria. The cafeteria floor is actually the floor that has been there, it's on grind level. And he said, "We're going to need to do something with that." And, you know, knowing the effect of flooding on buildings, I would tend to agree with him. So we moved that, based on everything else that had been done at Cape Hatteras Secondary School, to the top of our priority list to say, when we're able to fund this, that will be the first thing that we attack. And if you look, I think that's in the '26, '27 school year on the capital improvement Our goal is, and has been, to provide you with any area... Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
That project, because of the flooding, has moved it nearer to the top. I understand it's approximately a $7 million cafeteria replacement plan.
That's Ian's estimate, yes, sir. I think that involves elevating the floor to the Seronai.
Have we had anybody like Oakley Collier look at that and confirm $7 million? Bobby, do you know?
We have not done anything...
No.
...at all with that capital plan, other than share it with you all.
No, just that specific project estimate?
We have not.
Okay.
That was, that's just been brought to me, this spring during our capital improvement.
Do we have a copy of their capital improvement plan? What they sent last night?
That's what you have. Well, we have their...
I haven't seen it. I saw it on Facebook.
But I don't have any kind of priority at all.
I don't have any capital improvement.
I have no priority. I've just got a list.
So you have, well, you don't have it in front of you now. You have, you have approved, when we approved the capital improvement plan last year, you approved a capital improvement plan for the schools. Some of the things that are on the $2 million things, that's what we're talking about.
That's what we've been approving.
So you've approved all that previously.
Is it possible to see that?
Well, it is possible, yeah. You'll get it, when we do the capital plan this year for the budget, you'll get it. But the things that are on that list there are not on that plan. And so... So these are over and above the plan we've already approved? And the reason that you have those are two. One is you needed to have them because you'd need the plan, and two, to be sure you weren't misled or misunderstood or wasn't explained correctly what's out there, given what you're about to spend on the Early College, and to make sure that those are compatible. That's why you have that. The other capital improvement plan is funded, it's part of the fund, it's in the model. There's no issues with any of that stuff on the plan that you all approved last year.
So you're saying none...
Bit of this is on that plan.
None of this is on that plan?
This is all new to the plan.
I believe so, yes, sir. And primarily, that, the list, the prioritized list that you've got is the '26, '27 year.
Well...
I think that's what it is.
That's the placeholder year.
Right.
The placeholder year.
Placeholder year. It's not necessarily when that would be done.
Right. We really don't have, or we do have, dollar estimates for each one. $7 million cafeteria, Manio Athletic Complex, First Flight High School expansion, Cape Hatteras expansion. I presume if there was a dollar amount at each, it would add up to 29?
Correct, yeah.
See if I click that one?
Yes, sir.
And this, and this list we got...
Yes, sir.
Is that the priority list? Because it doesn't say what priority one is, two is, three is, four is, five is.
Well, it's listed in priority order. Yes, sir. The only thing that's not on there is the Early College, and there's one thing on there, the Manio Fieldhouse...
Right.
...that we believe we can identify the funding to go ahead and take care of that, so...
That's what I thought. But let me digress back a minute, especially in the beginning of this first document. The Dare, the majority of the total projects of five-year capital improvement plan are maintenance-related, that have been left untouched. Items that would be considered roof, chillers, HVAC. Correct me if I'm wrong, County Manager, we've got a maintenance fund at $1 million that they can do, that they, that they spend and give us the invoices for, and we pay it. What happened to that $1 million?
That was from one time, five or six budgets ago, that we did it and we held the money.
Yeah, but we did it every year.
Well, I know, because it took them five years to do it, and we carried those funds over, and as we used up those funds, they went away.
I didn't realize that. I didn't realize those funds had gone away.
Because they were for specific projects.
Okay.
Yeah, I recall that.
I wouldn't, I didn't realize that that had gone away, my bad.
So, so in, again, in an effort to be completely transparent with y'all and let you know what the horizon looked like down the road, we listed all those things that had either come up or that we were identifying, again, in the early stages of our administration, as we see these as needs down the road. And that's why they're listed on that year. But at the same time, that's probably why, what's gotten us to this point today. There's a couple things on there. One of those is the proposal for some classrooms and an auxiliary gym added at First Flight High School. It's $7 million. First Flight High School is the largest high school in Dare County. It has the most athletic teams of any school we have. It is at 113% capacity. Manio High School is at 85% capacity. Right now, Manio High School has an auxiliary gym. Cape Hatteras High School has an auxiliary gym, but the largest high school with the most athletic teams does not. And what we're, what we're hoping in that plan is somewhere down the road to be able to add at least three classrooms to be used as health classrooms, along with a smaller auxiliary gym. But it's that $7 million, I think, that's ticked the whole, the bucket over. Now, during this process, and again, I, some of this stuff is, has been out there, and we're finding out about it. During this process, and probably because of that $7 million in the budget, I was told that Manio High School had a fieldhouse approved, and I knew nothing about a fieldhouse at Manio High School. So I went back to our maintenance director and said, "Do you have anything on the fieldhouse?" He had a plat with a picture on it, with a square drawn where the fieldhouse is going to be. He had a plat with a picture on it, with a square drawn where the field house is going to be. And there was $400,000. Well, what I'm looking at and what I'm hearing in $400,000 don't go together. So I started digging for information. The maintenance director was able to find plans that I think Ben Cahoon drew and donated to us at the time. And there were additional plans that we found, that we were able to get from the schools. I then went out and met with the athletic director and the principal at Manio High School, and found out tons of information, again, that $400,000 will not do. Having done my homework, evidently in 2018, Manio High School was told that they were going, or money was allotted at $400,000 to build a field house at Manio High School. In 2021, they were again told that Manio High School was going to get a field house. And the reason it was going to get it was because the field house that they had was so bad it couldn't be used, and it had, had been closed by the Health Department.
When you say we're told, who told them? I mean, we didn't tell them. I mean, who?
I, I have no idea.
Okay.
So, so with all that being said, we spent between $80,000 and $100,000 last '22, '23 in the summer to renovate the field house at Manio High School, the home locker rooms. The visitors can now actually dress in the building. What they've proposed at Manio High School is a field house with additional public restrooms to it. There's a Phase 1 and a Phase 2. Phase 1 would be a home locker room and dressing, home locker room and restrooms. And Phase 2 would be an additional concession stand added to the one they've got now, and some storage. We believe that we've identified enough money that we can move ahead with that project. We moved, if you look at our capital improvement plan when you get it, $400,000 has been moved to next year, so we could figure out what in the world they, Manio had been promised, and where we were in the project. That's ongoing. Yes, sir.
So what is the, what is the total for the field house that you say y'all have come up with?
Our estimates are just below $1,800,000 to $900,000.
And you have that available?
We have 400 right now, but, but we've, we think we can come up with the other 600. From an additional source.
The $400,000 has been in the capital improvement plan since 2019, is that correct?
1819. Interestingly, I'm glad you said that. When I went back and pulled the capital improvement plans, it was listed in the 1819 year, was not listed in 1920, was not listed in 2021, 2022, but showed up again in 22, '23.
You know why?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Even though, what I was told was, once it's allocated, it's there.
Okay. The price I know went up from, because I called and asked...
What's that budget in fiscal '19 of that $100,000? It's been sitting there waiting for the project ever since.
So it's never been increased since 1819?
Right.
Okay. Because I was, when I called the year after I left the Board of Education, I was told the price had increased to close to $1 million because of everything increased in building supplies.
That's what I understood.
And there was no money to build it then, but...
So the 400s just sat there?
So it was never increased?
Right.
It also didn't come back to us for the capital improvement plans to add the money?
That's what I'm asking. Never was, come back in to add the money? Thank you.
Yeah, and that, again, the explanation I got was, it was there, but it, just because it didn't show up on the capital improvement plans the next several years, doesn't mean it went away. And it didn't. The 400s still sitting there. Y'all still have it.
And just for the people, you all probably know, but the capital improvement plan for the schools originates with the Board of Education. They give it to us, and then we figure out how to fund it and the timing of funding. We don't make the capital improvement decision priorities for them.
Right.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. I do want to say this too, because this is being handed around, and I want you to hear this from me. There is not, there has not been, and as long as I'm superintendent in Dare County, there will not be any discussion about closing Manio High School. Period.
Yeah, where did that come from?
I should hope not.
Have no idea. But that is not anywhere on the table. Nor has it been. And, and none of us are talking about it. So here's, here's where I'll...
Steve?
Yes, sir.
Rough estimate, how many students are in Manio High School? That would be nine through 12, right?
500.
Roughly 500?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I was just trying to get a scale. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Steve, would that be a...
Yes, sir.
Would it be transparent?
Yes, sir.
And I don't know where that subject's come from, or that topic's come from, or who even brought it, but nonetheless, it doesn't surprise me. Part of that discussion is closing down the high school, not having enough teachers, da-da-da-da-da, et cetera, et cetera, because if we do early college. How about addressing that?
Yes, sir.
And putting that to bed?
Let's look at, let's do some basic math. We're not reducing the number of students in any of our schools. We're taking these students from these schools and moving them here. You don't lose teachers by doing that. It's the same number of students in a different location. And I'll go back to, in my history, one of the biggest challenges in my previous position in Hyde County was the fact that they had to support two separate school systems, because there's 30 miles of water between them. Which means you actually hire additional teachers because they can't run back and forth. That, there's, there's no truth to that. Will we look at teaching positions currently to make sure that we're not, that we don't have teachers who aren't teaching any kids, or that have one or two or four kids in a classroom? Would you not expect me to do that? I mean, that's...
I think you would.
Yeah? Yes.
I think you would, Steve.
So, so having said that, yeah, we're reviewing everything we're doing and why we're doing it. And, and I appreciate your question, because it allows me to say, yes, we want to get the biggest bang for our buck from what you give us. And if it means we have to say, we're not going to teach four sections of that class, we're going to teach two, let me, let me do that. One of the biggest complaints that I've heard lately is, we're going to get rid of AP class, Advanced Placement classes. Absolutely not true. Will we reduce the number, I mean, the sections of those classes that we're teaching? That's very possible. And here's why. If we're teaching four sections of AP whatever, and we're able to reduce those sections to two and not overload those rooms, then we can take that teacher with that additional teaching period and move them into a class where we can reduce that class size as well. Everybody benefits. Every student across the board. Those are the kinds of things that we're looking at constantly. So early college isn't closing schools. It gives somebody an additional choice. It gives students the ability to go that way or that way, instead of just going that way. That's, I hope that addresses...
It did for me. I want the public to hear this.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's excellent. We have members of the press here right there taking down the quotes. It's excellent, guys.
We have no intention of closing schools or limiting options. We're trying to increase options. That's our goal.
Media quote, did you hear that quote from the superintendent?
I, I... Again, y'all, and I haven't done this too many times, so let me say this. My understanding of a capital improvement plan is just that. It's a plan. Anything beyond next year on that plan is for planning purposes, and it does get moved around. Things happen that rise to the top that you have to address, so you have to... The pockets aren't endless, so you have to take what you've got. That's what we've tried to do in this plan, is provide you with the plan. Here's what we're seeing out there. Here's, you're looking at a list of priorities for two years down the road that we're going, this, this stuff probably needs to be addressed. We're currently, constantly currently reviewing our facilities and our programs to address anything that's not adding value for students in Dare County schools. If that means the reduction of particular programs, not elimination, the reduction of particular programs to add more value to more students, I would think you would expect me to do that. And that's what we're going to do. And that's what I'm going to take to my board as a recommendation. We've got to continue and catch up providing maintenance to our buildings. It's the little drips that end up creating big holes. If you address the drip and take care of it now, you don't have to pay for the big hole to get fixed later. And so we are consciously pursuing things that we're trying to get ahead of before they cause, they cause us a problem that costs six figures. There are items on the list that you get our capital improvement plan that aren't new. Some of them have been there a while. The field house, the cafeteria in Hatteras. It's not new. But to our administration, it needs to rise to the level of, we're showing it to you and saying it needs to be done. Does it need to be done today? I'm not saying today, but I'm saying it needs to be addressed.
Steve?
I'm being cut off. Thank you.
Steve?
Yes, sir.
Is it, is it the priority of the BOE since the early college was not, as you said, part of the CIP? Is it, in fact, the BOE's number one priority is early college?
My understanding from my board is yes.
Since we have your board chair here, how about addressing that, Mr. Twitty?
Mr. Chairman, let me say this before he says something.
Okay.
Again, my understanding is, and again, Bobby and Dave are better at this. My understanding is, we're not talking about an either-or. We're talking about the possibility, the, unless something goes south, the definite possibility of being able to do both. And that's, that's why I gave you the list.
What is the both?
What's the both? Because this is...
Because this is nan, nan items on this CIP list.
So what is, what is it?
We only have dollar amounts of three of them.
Listen, here from the chairman, and then I'd like to lay out what I understand the plan to be, and then get the Board of Education to confirm that is in fact their plan.
Should we hold our questions?
Hold a moment.
For a moment.
Yeah, hold, okay.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here today.
Thanks, Dave.
And thank you for all your support in the past, and certainly in the future. This early college has been talked about for many years. Actually, when Mr. Bassnight was on the board, early college was mentioned at that time. We had went into steps, and some of you were informed in a meeting by previous administration that if and when we were going to open the facility, we were going to have 200 students the first year. I felt like my first term of being the chair, and our interim superintendent, Mr. Blackstock, met with Mr. Alton, Ms. Loder, Mr. Overman, and we brought the three key administrators from our secondary schools into that meeting. Those administrators at the time had no clue about early college. So we had a eye-open meeting, discussed with them, and in that discussion, we were asked to move forward with early college and see what it would look like in Dare County. So that's what I did, went back to our, to the board with Mr. Blackstock, and then in the meantime, unsputnoing to Mr. Alton, he shared with me, he said, maybe you need to get with Mr. Bassnight. He has a lot of information about early college, which I couldn't even let him know at the time. We were working in a contract agreement with Mr. Bassnight to be our current superintendent. So that place took on, Mr. Bassnight came in. He shared all the information about what early college can do for our students, another opportunity in the community for our students. And he done a very good job, and our board moved forward and said, let's focus on early college, bringing it into Dare County. And that's how we were proceeding, and went to your CIP board and presented that as well. It is separate than our CIP that we have every year. So that's, that's where that is. And I know some of you have got information saying, well, Mr. Bassnight told us in a meeting that we weren't planning to have any other future buildings, things like that. At the time of that meeting, Mr. Bassnight and his staff were still having our CIP committee meetings. So none of that was a drip, was told at the time of what they were looking at. So here today, we're here.
But once again, early college is the number one priority?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Got you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
So with all that said, the early college came to us from the previous administration. We had meetings with them. They wanted to know, would we do it? Could we do it? He said, if you all want to do that, then you need to come back with, to us and tell us what it's going to cost, how it's going to work, all those things. And then the process went through, just as Chairman Twitty said. Over the last month, or four, superintendent and I have had multiple conversations trying to sort through all this, trying to figure out how we got where. Is there a disconnect? Are we all on the same page? To make sure, and I'll tell you now what my understanding of where we are is. I'm told that where we are is that early college, well, let me back up. The source of funds to do all, anything that we're talking about, that we've talked about today, on the list, early college, all of it, there are two sources of funds. There's the lottery proceeds, and then there's a part of the sales tax that legislature has set aside for schools. Both of those funds can only be used for school construction. We can't do anything else with those funds. The schools can't do it. You can't hire teachers with them, you can't pay salaries with them. You can build stuff with them. And so, and that fund accumulates, there's a Dare County share of those funds, and they accumulate and accumulate and continue to accumulate until you spend them.
Part of those funds are being used paying the debt service, Dave, on previous bonds, right?
They'll accumulate right now after '26, because right now, we spend more than what they are.
Right. And so we, we have been using those funds, but there are, there's, there's capacity in the fund now of roughly $25 million.
Future.
Right. In around 2025-ish, '24, '25. So we have capacity in the fund, and then if you spend that $25 million of capacity, you don't get capacity again until around 2028. And then you have another $29 or $30 million of capacity to do something else with. All right? So what the question for us is, we've, we've got these funds that are there that can only be used. What do, what does the Board of Education want us to do with these restricted funds that can only be used? What are your priorities? Where do we spend them? And so where we are, and what I understand is, we spend the first $25 million, well... The numbers that the superintendent gave us were correct. To renovate a 60-year-old building was going to cost $17 million, and then you've got a 60-year-old renovated building. The cost to build a new early college, brand-new, was going to be about $21 million. We, our experience with our other stuff is that the numbers are always in flux, and they're never in flux to our benefit. They go up. And so when we looked at $21 million, for purposes of planning, Dave and I said, what is the capacity? And we've used a $25 million number as a working number, just so that we could be sure we had funds there to cover whatever the escalation in cost might be. As we've been working through that, then the architects have told us, what did we meet, three weeks ago?
Yep.
That that cost now, they've just gotten some bids back and done some other stuff, would be roughly $23 million. Okay? That leaves us $2 million of capacity in that fund. So what we've told the Board of Education is, you got $23 million, design the school, the early college, to make it fit that. And in that process, we've gone in and talked with the architects, talked with COA, and where there's a chemistry lab that's already in the COA building, and we're not going to build two new chemistry labs in the early college, because they can walk across the lawn and use the chemistry lab at the early college. And so where we have duplicate facilities...
Libraries.
Libraries and the other one, don't have to have... Don't have to have two libraries, that kind of thing. We've done it to try to pare down that cost to keep it in that $23 million. So the number one priority would be the early college out of this first tranche of funds. There's going to be roughly $2 million left. From that $2 million, the idea, he said, they moved up the fieldhouse. That's the next thing in line. At the same time, you would build the fieldhouse. You've got $400,000 there. You need roughly $600,000 more. You've got $2 million of capacity, so you've got a source for that 6 million. So you build the early college and the fieldhouse at the same time. That uses up almost all of your capacity.
Right.
You've got another million of capacity there. That would be for cost overruns on either project because, you know, these numbers are wags. We don't really know exactly what they're going to be. But that gives you capacity to get those two projects done. And that uses up the capacity in the first pot of money. In '28, the second pot of money comes up. And then you can go through and hit the priorities that are on that sheet that you have there in whatever order the school board decides that they are. If if something changes between now and then, that that order gets changed, then so be it. That that's what the school board is supposed to tell us. They're supposed to tell us, here's what we need and here's the priority that we need them in. And so we do have capacity to do all those things, but it doesn't come until '28. And that assumes everything goes according to the plan. And if it doesn't, then we have to rearrange the capital plan. It's a living document. If costs go up, if revenues go down, then we we adjust.
All right. With all with all that being said and done, can the school board live with that plan?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Sure.
One last thing to add to make sure they can live with as well. We've asked the question, we ask it at the CIP meeting. I've asked it privately several times to the superintendent is if we're fiscal year '28 is calendar year '27. Right, Dave? A sense of.
Yes.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Right.
Yeah. And so are we going to have kids without classrooms? Are we going to have problems in the school that are going to come back and bite us before '27? We don't want to spend $25 million now and use up our capacity and have you come back next year and say, oh, my God, we got this problem. We don't have a place to do this or a place to do that or whatever. And now we don't have a source of funds because we just spent it. And they have assured me that that is not the case, that these things can wait until fiscal year '28, calendar year '27. And if we can do it on those schedules, then they should be fine. And so with that said, then what I said, then our priority list is the early college and the fieldhouse. And then the list of things in the order that are on that sheet that you have in front of you.
Gotcha.
And the timing of that is those things we begin working on right away with the early college. And things on your sheet are for that '27, '28 timeframe when the dollars become available. If that is the plan, then as things stand right now, we can do that. And so what I'm asking is confirmation of all that I just said.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
So can can we? Well, let's get some more questions before I ask my question.
Okay.
Bee.
Well, I have several. You want to go first?
No, you go ahead, Bee. You go first.
As as you said, early college idea did come about when I was chairman of the school board. And we did tour the COA campus, the buildings that are there. There was never a thought of building a new building. Those, at that time, we thought we could renovate those two buildings.
That's what I thought when we started to.
And it would not be. Twiford's buildings, the two buildings there on Twiford Road. And it would not be a price tag of close to $25 million. We moved along. We met, we we toured the building, you know, it was going along. COVID hit, everything went up, you know, just messed everything up. So then, you know, we need to get back on track. So I'm certainly not, what you mentioned, anti-early college. I don't think that has been a, you know, pervasive thought really at this point. But I do, I have been hearing from some community members and I do want to know what kind of input you received from the parents, the students, any, did you do a survey or anything just to just to test the waters on if the community wants the early college? I know we tried to do ROTC in our school several years ago. We surveyed every high school student to see, is there interest? You know, did they want to be in ROTC? And it came back no, it wasn't worth the money we'd have to spend, which at the time was about $85,000 and a classroom, dedicated classroom. When we did the language program, we had community meetings. We asked, you know, who's interested before we invested the money. So what kind of input was received before?
That's interesting that you mentioned ROTC because that was the second thing that the board told me when they hired me, that they wanted ROTC. And we polled every single military organization to come in. And the only one that was interested was the Air Force at First Flight High School. And, you know, and that, again, facility space and and.
It's expensive.
We have not polled the community to ask them if they want an early college.
Or students?
Or students. And and I I would say the reason that we haven't done that is because we're trying to get the information out there about what early college really is. And I'll I'll go back to what you're dealing with right now in the community and people making up what early college is and the disinformation that's being put out. It's really hard to get a positive response to a poll if somebody's been told that it's going to close Manio High School.
Oh, absolutely.
And so our our plan is to continue to 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 continue to put information out. For example, after our community meetings now, in the next, before next spring, we'll start meeting with the eighth graders that would be eligible to apply. And and then we meet with their parents. And then we meet with eighth grade teachers to explain what what the early college would be like and and disseminate the information. But ultimately comes down to this, nobody's being made to go to the early college. It all comes down to an individual poll every eighth grade, at the end of every eighth grade year. And if you don't want your kid involved in early college, don't apply.
What happens if we build this $25 million building and nobody applies? I mean, I don't think that's going to happen.
Well, and and I'll.
Oh, that's me, I'm sorry.
I I I can't tell you that there's zero possibility that that would happen.
No, I'm.
But I can tell you that they're successful everywhere else. And I can't, I can't believe that Dare County is so different that that a a, an outstanding educational opportunity that addresses the need of specific groups of students would not be successful in Dare County. I just, I don't.
We're behind the curve. Most of the schools.
Commissioner Bassnight, if you recall, when you were chair, the prior superintendent was confirming that they could get as many as 350 students.
Total, yes. Which is what you're talking about now still.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, but not not the first year.
We're not starting. And as a matter of fact, we're going to phase in our enrollment at about 50 kids, 50 kids per year.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely. He was confirming that. And I would hope it still would hold true, but.
Me too.
I guess you won't, you know, your meetings will, I guess, prove that there's an interest. I know you've had it at Manio Middle School and tonight's Manio High School.
That changes each year too. Because one year you may get more enrollees from Manio High School and one year you may get more enrollees from First Flight High School. I'd like to be able to say hatters too, but that's probably not going to be your highest group.
Right.
But it really depends on the parents and the students, the individual students that want to apply, where where that enrollment is going to come from.
Well, it's it's the same, it's the same thing as Dare Education Foundation, I mean Dare Guaranteed Scholarship. We're doing the same thing and and that's encouraging our students to take advantage of that, just like you would be early college. So I think you're you're going to run into the same circumstances.
We want, we want our students to not be limited in their options.
Right.
Whether that's whether that's four-year college and occupation or the military, those are all options. Or whether that's honors courses, AP courses, dual enrollment or early college. All of those are options and they fit to different groups of kids. And and from a Dare County educational standpoint, why would we not offer the best educational opportunities in all areas for all kids instead of just limiting limiting certain and say, well, you either do it this way or or you don't have an option? And that's, again, it's it's an option that every year, parents get to decide. Every eighth grade coming to ninth grade, they get to decide. And and that really is your poll. You can poll a fourth grader or you can poll a ninth grader, but neither one of those are are probably going to enroll in the early college anytime soon. It's that eighth grade population each year that's going to determine what your enrollment for the next year is.
Are we like the first district in the state of North Carolina to adopt early college?
Absolutely.
We're way behind the curve.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. We're way behind here? So there's evidence of success of the program.
Eighty-seven.
In eighty-seven. Oh, is that what it is?
Yeah.
Wow.
So only seventeen seventeen counties.
There's 117 school districts in North Carolina and 100 of them have at least one early college.
Yeah. My point, and second question, Steve. It's it's adopted statewide broadly in a vast majority of districts. Will we see a drain of, let me just say, more advanced students siphoned out of the high schools and a a remainder of students who perhaps aren't as strong academically left behind?
There are some early colleges that are set up to be specific to industries. For example, there may students that are only interested in going to medical school. We were very specific about the way that we targeted the population or or not targeted the population for the early college here in Dare County to make it inclusive of everyone.
That's what I remember you telling me.
So so we're not going to go in there and and take the cream off the top and just leave everything else. We want kids, and and in particular, there are students and and there are students and parents in our schools that aren't going to go on Facebook and comment on this. And they're not going to show up to this meeting. And they're not going to come tonight to Manio High School to that meeting either because the parents aren't involved or they're too busy or they have work to do and they can't get there. And all of those reasons, those are the kids we want. Because those are the kids that don't have the parents that are going to stand up and fight for them and argue for them and come to public meetings for them. That that's that's great. My parents were that way and I hope I'm that way for my kids. But all parents aren't that way and they can't be that way. And what we're trying to do is we're trying to offer something to a kid that goes into a classroom and flies under the radar all day long. They're not going to raise their hand. They don't want to be talked about because they answered the wrong question. They don't want to be picked on because they tried to be the teacher pet. They they just want to be, to exist and get out. And we want to create an environment for that kid, that average kid that can go there and be successful, that kid that may never be recommended to take an AP or an honors class in high school can get an associate's degree or a career certification or go into the military from the early college. That's what this is about.
So I used to work with an attorney. And every time we were confronted with these decisions, he would look at me and say, Rob, how many bad things are going to happen if we do this decision? What are the bad things we've got to really be concerned about? I'm fishing for the really bad things and I'm not coming up with any. So I'm asking for help from the chair and the superintendent, maybe members of my own board. What am I missing in terms of finding these very bad things that I simply haven't been able to find? And I'm usually a pretty good looker for them.
Each year, in in my experience as a principal at early college, we'd bring in 75 kids. You would have three to five kids at the end of the school year that would want to transfer back to their sending school. I think for a vast majority of students, that this is one of the best educational settings that they they could ever be involved in.
It's an acceptable stat.
Yeah, there are going to be a few that will change. That's not what I was looking for. I was looking for the catastrophic downside, horrible thing that, my God, we got to put the brakes on. And I'm not hearing it.
Nothing has, nothing has been shared to the board that there's any negative about it. Our, we we had a group of board members that went to Nash County and actually visited a early college facility. And those board members come back and gave us report phenomenal. I mean, it was an op, a whole different atmosphere as another opportunity for the students.
I think he's, that's the key word is opportunity. There's going to be kids that you are, that this board of education is providing opportunities. All right?
Yes, sir.
Will everybody seize on it? I hope they would. I can speak and I'm sure Mary Ellen Balance can. There's kids, there's Hispanic kids, I'm not going to single out any entity any more than I have to, but they see the opportunity that's in front of them and you're going to get some response. I can speak for my district down there, but I know, and granted, it's not as big as First Flight or Manio, but you're being watched and you're presenting opportunities and I feel they'll seize on them.
This board also gave opportunities for homeschool children to participate in athletics. They had the guidelines to follow if they choose to do so. So there again, this board is not just looking at the students that go to Dare County schools. We're looking at all of our students that are in Dare County, that as much as we can do to give them an opportunity to be part of us.
Commissioner Bassnight, you said you had several questions and we've somehow we got sidetracked.
That's all right. Yeah, he's the one that just stepped on it. That's fine. I just want to be sure that our classrooms are going to be built at First Flight High School if we need it. You said you're at 113% capacity. I know it's been overcrowded for a few years.
In that way, yes, ma'am.
And it's going to be at least 20, 30 before anything would be built. Is that going to be an issue?
Dave, on the timing of the money.
If the money comes in.
If the money is available in 2028, if if we have a two-year process, do you start the process now to do it then?
Yeah, you got to, you got to remember design time from once you approve it.
Yeah, that's what I mean, the building itself, the open.
Time. And and it's the structure of the debt. As long as I can issue the debt from March to June, I can back up that first hit of debt service back into the following year. So if it's a '29 project, you'd issue the debt technically sometime around May or June of '27.
So you could possibly have it built, a couple of years to build, right? I mean, once you approve the money.
Right, depending on.
So you could get them in there by '29.
Contract time.
So you don't, you're not, you don't have to wait to start the whole two-year process in '28?
Right, exactly.
You can start ahead of that to have it available for financing in '28.
Okay. And then and then build, so two years to build.
Well.
About.
For example, this project, the the early college project, if you approve the contract right now, we're not going to issue the debt until probably a year or later from now. And that allows me to make the first debt service hit in fiscal '26.
Yeah.
I think her.
My question's really not about the money. You've told me the money's there, but I want to know when the doors would open.
What's the earliest we could complete construction if our money's not available till '28? How much can we do upfront to speed up that timeframe? And that's what you're asking, right?
That's what I'm asking.
Okay, okay. Not a lot because you got to have the construction biz to issue the debt, debt and issue the debt about the same time it starts.
So you're going, you're looking, if if you're talking about '28, then maybe in '27, you can get the architects, get everything going, get the design going, get the bidding done. You can then structure the debt so that the payments don't fall until '28. And and once you've got those bids in '27, then you're at a point where you can start the construction once you got the debt issued.
Thank you. And I'm looking at that expansion as being number three on your list. So that means that that would come even later. I guess.
No, we can.
Can you do all of this at one time?
We can do all of it down.
Can I do it?
And and I'll say this.
Twenty-nine, okay.
With with enrollment from First Flight High School and the early college, that's going to take some of that student population out of that building as well, so.
Approximately, well, 50, 50 students from all three schools the first year.
Which is two classrooms.
But they're not all going to come from First Flight, are they?
No, 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 that's, no, it would take some out of Manio High School and Cape Hatters as well.
And did I understand you correctly that we have the money, that we could build the early college and also do the fieldhouse at Manio High School?
That's correct.
And how, can you explain to me how these things, the fieldhouse, is that part of the MHS athletic complex you have on this list?
Yes, ma'am.
And the locker room?
Yes, ma'am.
So that would be the whole, the whole shebang you could build out? So that would be the whole, the whole shebang you could build out?
The, the, the need at Manio High School right now is for ba, restrooms on the athletic complex. That's the need. And that's, again, that's not new.
No, it's not.
And, and so we can either build basically a golf restroom out there, um, a little building by itself, or we can combine it into the desire to build a, a home locker room with two restrooms attached, public restrooms attached to that. And that, on that list, again, that's the, probably the lowest cost on that list, so.
And I'm, I write that if we did that approach, then the locker room that you just renovated would become the visitor locker room?
I would hope so. I can't speak for the administration and Catholic director, but.
That one, okay, yeah.
Just spent a hundred grand.
Yeah, yeah, right. And does that include a press box somewhere?
No, the press box is totally separate. Um, and the press box is what sits on top of the locker room.
Right.
Um, but we are looking at instead of, e, even the possibility of either replacing the roof on the press box and doing that internally, or they actually make these pods that are like press boxes that you drop in that, um, may be cheaper than, we're researching that right now, may be cheaper than, than replacing that facility. So, um, we're, we're looking at our options currently to be able to, again, to do it, um, the best and the most economical way we possibly can do it.
And I appreciate that. Dare County schools have always done that, and, and you are continuing that tradition, and I appreciate that. So I want to be just clear. We have enough money to build the early, early college and do the work at Manio High School.
You've asked that a couple of times, and I'm, I'm going to give you the.
I want to be clear.
I'm going to give you the caveat.
Give it to me.
If everything is as expected, the answer to that question is yes.
Yes.
Okay.
But if costs accelerate at twenty percent, or nineteen percent, or thirty percent rates like we had happen a couple of years ago, then we've got to regroup because that, that pot of money's finite. It, it doesn't grow in that year. We can only spend that amount, so it has to fit, whatever we do has to fit in that budget. And so the caveat is if something changes that is unanticipated, then that become, we may or may not, for either project.
But if we, if we lock in a contract with Oakley Collier.
That's just a design contract.
A design contract.
That's a design. Yeah, so then we have to go out and bid it, and then, then we can lock in the price once we got a bid.
Right.
All right, good. Is that it, Commissioner?
That's it.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Real quick, oh, go ahead, Danny.
This list is going to be in flux. This is not a, a static document. I can see things being added on this going forward. We're in an election year, and I'm just going to spell it out. Uh, if you're running for school board, or if you're on the school board, I think it's incumbent that, uh, the Board of Education now and going forward redouble their efforts. You got a tall order ahead of you. There's a lot of experienced people on the board right now. You've done a good job, uh, but that job's going to go, is going to get exponential. And in terms of some of the stuff that's going out on, uh, social media, and even when I was on the school board in the past, there was all these turf wars, you know? Manio was out front, First Flight was loud, Cape Hatteras was, uh, the redheaded stepchild thing. My challenge to you is, is to bring the cohesion there. You can do it. Uh, this is an op, this, speaking of opportunities, I think this board can rise to the challenge. And it'll go a lot better with this board and the, and the board coming up. Uh, if, if we're seeing y'all step, if we're seeing the Board of Education step up their game.
Thank you, Commissioner Couch, the commis, Vice Chairman.
Steve. Thank you for being here, appreciate it. Just have one question.
Yes, sir.
Do you anticipate that Dare County will have five thousand or so students in ten, fifteen, or twenty years from now? And if so, why do you think that?
I, I, I can't go out fifteen years. I wouldn't dare do that, but I'll say this. Our numbers went up a little bit over five thousand, but they've come back down to just under five thousand. And we've been at the four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine, um, in that range of five thousand for some time. We had a bump, um, a couple of years ago. Our current sophomores and, and freshmen in high school were a bump in population. Those numbers have dropped back down, um, to less, maybe a hundred or so below five thousand. Um, that's where we are, um, and it's been that way for quite some time. I, I, I wouldn't dare tell you what it's going to look like in fifteen years.
I, I realize that, and.
But I'll put it this, young families, there's not a lot of young families moving in.
Exactly.
We know why.
County manager and I have had several discussions about this. And the question comes up, uh, and unfortunately gets back to the, the dirty word of the month, and that's housing. But.
You use that word in front of me.
One of the, one of the arguments is, is that, you know, we are an aging population in Dare County. Older people are going to be leaving, selling their homes, whatever. The problem is, is that the young childbearing age people that come in can't afford to buy those homes that are being sold. So, uh, my, my, the concern and the question that I have is, how are we going to expect to continue to have the, the, and it's a round number obviously, but it's on both sides of it, the five thousand students to, um, occupy these great facilities that we're building for them? And I'm not saying that they don't need to be built.
Yeah, we may not.
But at, at some, at some level, you know, what, what do we see? Is there some, uh, group that can do demographic tests that take all of this stuff into consideration and, and project, uh, how many kids we can expect to have fifteen or twenty years from now?
I, I'm sure there's someone out there that, that can come in to do a community study. Uh, as a matter of fact, and I, I know there are, um, and that's, the commissioners probably have done something like that in your past. But, but I'll, let me say one thing about sidebar to what you're asking. Uh, this has come up several times. Where are you going to get teachers for this? How are you going to get t, teachers can't move in here and, and apply and live in Dare County right now to, to work at the early college. I've already had three people, teachers, reach out to me, um, which is better than half of our starting staff at the early college, telling me that they want to be considered for a job. And two of the three live here. So, um, I don't know how we're going to lower the cost of housing in Dare County. If I did, I'd have wiggled my nose and made that happen a long time ago. But we are consciously working with any entity, um, whether it's DEF or the, or the Housing Task Force here, to, to be a voice at the table and, and do anything we can to, to help our people and provide for that housing to go into the future.
Yeah, well, we're certainly concerned about teacher housing, as you're aware. We've had multiple conversations about that. But, but the long-term concern is, where are the students coming from? And, and I, I can't get my head wrapped around it.
One of the questions you had, Mr. Overman, is that the Department of Public Construction does our funding every year, and they give us a base number of, of our student population. And with my eight years on the school board, the number has not been close. Some years, they, they have gone away, two hundred kids over than what we were expecting, and two hundred behind. And when we have the last number, it takes us about nine months to get the funding from the state. So that's how we're funded currently right now with DPI. That they, they came up, they keep, they give us a number, a projected number of student enrollment, and it's never been.
Sounds like to me they're suspect right off the bat.
Right. All right, Commissioner Ross, did you have something else?
Last thing. The flooding down in, uh, Hatteras in the kitchen, uh, you don't have to answer now, and this may have already been looked at. Any mitigation, any short-term, you know, we can put in some temporary barrier structures, surround it? I don't know, I'm making it up. But something to help relieve it temporarily until the main rebuilt structure could be constructed.
Well, as we all know, how tight Cape Hatteras is. Ms. Beth, our secondary school principal, um, she calls on her staff and with Ian and our other maintenance department staff, goes down and prepares before a storm, throwing the sandbags and things like that. So, um, back, some of you may remember in nineteen ninety-three, we had Emily came through, and we had close to seven foot of water in it, in that particular cafeteria. And that's still the same cafeteria today in there. Of course, new kitchen equipment, we, and freezers and things like that, but the floor itself. So it has been flooded several times and been taken care of properly. But that's why, that's how we do it each time when we have a storm that comes up, is our maintenance staff and her school staff goes and prepares with sandbags to make sure that, that part of the building.
I'm talking a berm, eight feet high of sandbags that we spent a half a million dollars on today so that we don't have to rush in twenty-four hours before the storm.
We currently don't do that, but we.
I know, I know, that's what I'm asking.
You'd have to do that around the whole building, Rob.
Yeah, I don't even know if it's possible, Bob. It just breaks my heart. I keep hearing, we're flooding, flooding, we can't do anything.
We had that same issue here in Manio with the auditorium for years.
Okay, okay.
Commissioner House?
Yeah, with, dealing again with the cafeteria, uh, every time that floods, how much does it cost to replace the equipment in there?
I have to get back with that. Uh, I don't currently remember the last time it flooded to, actually done the damage to the equipment. We'd have to go back and do some research. But I knew, I knew in ninety-three, Emily, it was done then. Um, but we'd have to go back and do.
There's a drainage problem there.
Yeah. It's, it's all, I mean, it's.
Ground level.
It's ground level.
Right. And also, to, to the fact of putting sandbags around it, all you're doing is trapping the water into it. It won't be able to flow back out.
Yeah, that's my point. I don't know if that was a solution. I'm just thinking out loud of any way to mitigate.
It doesn't. Um, so how about the, uh, the mold and mildew remediation on those buildings once it's flooded? How much does that cost?
Uh, currently, I, I couldn't tell you. We could have to research that and get back with you.
How much was the last school that we did?
Uh, First Flight Middle and First Flight Elementary was close to a million dollars.
Exactly.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, and also, how many students do we have at, uh, Cape Hatteras High School?
Three hundred. Uh, that's six through twelve, three hundred.
Three hundred? All right, so, and in the student college, you're looking at how many students roughly, ballpark?
Two, three.
Total, we're, we're allocating three hundred and fifty. We're looking at probably two fifty.
So about the same amount of students?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So for one group of students, we, we can spend seven million and help them have a healthy cafeteria to eat in. Or we can take the same three hundred and fifty students and give them a twenty-three thousand dollar new facility.
Twenty-three million dollars.
Well, yeah, we have maybe, we have a twenty-three million dollar facility. So my, my, I'm, I'm just wondering, do we want our students in a healthy environment first before we expand what we're doing? That's a tough question.
I don't know if that's a fair comparison. Are they unhealthy in Cape Hatteras? Are people getting sick?
Yes, sir, not to, not to our knowledge.
I'm not saying that they are. I'm just saying, in, in, in the situation of, if, if that building were to get flooded, we'd have to remediate it. So that building would have to be closed for a while for that. And how do those students eat in that cafeteria, or is there temporary solutions if that cafeteria is closed due to flooding?
Yes, sir. If, once we do the renovation at Cape Hatteras Secondary, the students will be going to Cape Hatteras Elementary School using their cafeteria, or Cape Hatteras Elementary, on the beautiful days, could do their lunch and bring it to the school and have the kids in picnic tables and things like that.
So there is a plan in place?
Yes, there is, there is a plan in place.
Okay.
Well, let me ask this.
We wouldn't make them do it.
Let me ask this. The Board of Education buy flood insurance?
Since ninety-three, yes, we have.
Okay, all right. Why, why have we not, why have we not capitalized on, on?
Below base flood.
Huh?
It's below base flood.
It's below base flood. I knew you'd have some kind of, I should have known there'd be some reason. So, um, sorry, Steve, I just, I had to interject that.
I was just wondering if we knew how much it was going to cost to replace equipment? Because if we're maxed out on our capital improvements and then this happens, where does that money come from?
So, we run the risk every day, not just with schools, but with all our facilities.
Yeah.
If the chiller goes out in the courthouse five years before replacement, we do what we did, how many, five years ago?
Yeah, exactly.
And we figure out how to replace the chiller in the courthouse. So in a situation where we have an emergency and we, and it's uninsured, then we got to come up with a way to do it, much as we did with the mold remediation in the schools last year. So that's part of the risk that we take every day with what we do. Uh, and it doesn't come out of the lottery funds or wherever else. It comes out of our budget and our, our reserve, that's what our reserves are for.
That's right. I was just clarifying, that's all.
Sure.
Just clarifying. All right, I'm good.
Okay. So before we shut down, move forward, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page with the Board of Education. And y'all, Chairman, correct me if I'm wrong. Number one priority, BOE, is early college. We're going to apply, we're going to get that money from the State Education Lottery Fund, some twenty-five million. We're projecting that, um, you say a no?
We're going, the answer is yes and no. The answer is, we're going to borrow the money and use the lottery fund to pay the debt service, so we won't get a twenty-five million dollar.
Thank, it's still twenty-five million dollars.
Correct, yes.
Our, our architects are telling us it's going to cost about twenty-three, hopefully. Whatever's left over, we're going to do, um, item.
Field house and.
Field house.
I'm, I'm, I'm going by the item number. Item seven, which is the Manio High School home locker room, okay? And, and that's it. Then we're going to tackle these other CIP items in order that you gave them to us in twenty-eight. And I just want to make sure we're on the same page, and we all agree that that's the game plan.
Yes, sir. That's, that's what we, we agreed to.
Okay. Good deal.
So I got a question on that. On the twenty twenty-eight, that's what cover, the cafeteria, the high school, uh, the.
It's going to do it all. It's going to do the, everything on that list.
That's twenty-nine million dollars of capacity.
It's going to do everything on that list, Steve. In that order.
Okay.
In the order that they gave us.
Right.
I see, I see, I see BOE members in the audience shaking their head yes, and I see the chairman saying yes.
No, I understand that. I'm just saying, we've only gotten these first three number items. I didn't know how much all the rest of this was. I didn't know.
Well, that's where the twenty-nine was coming from.
Twenty-nine. So these things match what's on your actual capital improvement plan that Ian presented at your last board meeting?
Yes, ma'am, and, and when y'all get, when we present that before the fifteenth, you'll get a copy of that, and the, the dollar values estimates are on each one of those items.
Thank you. And they're estimates, yeah.
And then when we come back to you with our capital improvement plan and the school capital improvement plan, we will have those in the right years where they'll actually be funded and show those to you, and you'll have to approve both of those.
Okay.
Because when we leave here today, we'll, we'll go do our agenda packet meeting, and we've got to present it to our board next Monday, our proposed budget, so we can give it to you Wednesday.
And the CIP will be included in that?
Yes, ma'am, everything will be included.
Even though it was presented at the last board meeting?
Yes, ma'am. That's, as a proposed, that was presented as the last board.
All right, has anybody else got anything else? First off, Steve, uh, David, BOE members, uh, Ron, uh, Murray Ellen, Susan, thank y'all all for being here this morning. It was very, very helpful. We really, really appreciate your input, and, and this was short notice on you guys, and I, I really appreciate it very much. I'm, I'm glad we, I'm glad you were able to get us straight where we needed to be on this and what we needed to look at.
I, I appreciate all your questions. I really do, because that helps me answer the questions for a lot of other people. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, David, thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you. County manager?
We need a motion to approve that we call your contract, if that's where we're going.
That is exactly right. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion approved, second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross to approve the design contract and authorize the county manager to sign. And it's been, uh, seconded by the vice chairman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. I know that was a long process, but thank you all.
Chairman, that brings us to item eleven on the agenda. Um, that's an Alliance Health contract agreement. We've done these before. We, as you know, the state has negotiated with Medicaid to do Medicaid reimbursements, and they've, and you get to, if you're on Medicaid, you get to select your provider or whatever. Alliance is one of those, this one came through EMS. If we're going to take Medicaid reimbursement, we're required to enter into one of these contracts, and we're, and they're non-negotiable. We're not allowed to change any provisions or anything. If we don't like the contract, we don't have to sign it, we don't have to approve it. We're not allowed to change any provisions or anything. If we don't like the contract, we don't have to sign it. We don't have to approve it. But we also, if, if, if a Medicaid patient comes in that's in a lot, that has Alliance as their provider, then we don't get paid. They're, they're insurance company.
Yeah.
We have some of, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, we have one with them. There are three or four that we have.
This is different than Trillium.
This is different than Trillium, yes. And so, again, all it is, is if we're gonna take Medicaid payments, and then we have to enter these contracts with the carriers, if you will, this won't be the last one that you do.
Right.
So today, I'm asking you to approve this. When we do the budget, in the budget ordinance, I'm gonna ask you to authorize me to sign these types of non-negotiable contracts for Medicare in the future, so I don't have to bring them back and take your time to do something that we don't have any discretion about anyway. So that's where we are. We need to approve this.
Motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Further discussion?
Uh, just got one question. I know, I know these managed care contracts, they're non-negotiable. They're just there. Is there any way that we could put them on the consent agenda, so at least we could see them?
Sure, I'd do it however you want.
Yeah. Because I think that'd be beneficial to-
Do we rather have them that way?
Yeah.
Sure, okay. Then Dave will take that out of the budget ordinance, and then I'll put them on the consent agenda. Sure.
Okay. Alright. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Alright. Item twelve is a request from the Housing Task Force with regard to the Affordable Housing Grant. And contrary to what we've written on your agenda, what they have actually asked for, I got an email from the chairman, is they want us to, they ask us to put on hold any actions to return the thirty-five million dollar grant while the Task Force work to develop a plan that's acceptable to the Dare County and its towns. The Task Force has had several meetings through all this, and they've had, we've had our legislative delegation involved in those meetings as well. One of the things they were told was, you know, if you want to repurpose or use this money for some other purpose, you gotta have a plan. You gotta do it quickly. You gotta get it in there and get it to them, which was gonna require them to, to work extra hard and still may not be able to do it timely. What they're asking us to do is simply sit on the money for a while until they come up with a plan, find out something else they can do. Until last week, that wasn't gonna be a difficult decision. We could just sit on it for a while, but what we, what happened last week was the legislature in their technical corrections bill went through and repealed all of the grant language for affordable housing for Dare County. Appealed, repealed House two fifty-nine, but the language that, that circumvented the town ordinance. So anything with regard to housing that we've been talking about that came from the legislature for Dare County has now been repealed. What that means to us is, is that we no longer have the authority to spend this money. We've got, we've got a pot of money that they gave us. That pot of money had a, a set of rules and authority to spend. That authority and those rules have now been taken away. I talked with the attorney for the President Pro Tim's office about it on Thursday, um, or Wednesday, and he says, no, there's no going back. This is done. You gotta send the money back. He sent me some statutes that talk about unused, unappropriated money has to be back in before the end of the fiscal year and things like that. So we're at a place where we, unless somebody goes to the legislature and gets something else changed or done, we're at a place where, because of that legislation, we kinda have to return the money now. We don't have any, any discretion. Now, timing wise, does it have to be done tomorrow? Does it have to be done the next day? Not necessarily. According to the, uh, President Pro Tim's office, by the end of the fiscal year, it does have to be done. I have not had an opportunity to talk to, um, Office of Management and Budget since that was passed. And as of Thursday, I think, or Friday, I can't remember, the governor still hadn't signed it. So as we speak, that repeal is not the law until the governor either signs it, or there's a time limit. If he doesn't sign it, it becomes the law anyway if he doesn't veto it. So we gotta wait and see what the governor's office does before that. So that gives us some amount of time for the Task Force to work, but once the governor signs it and does it, then we're gonna be in a short lease, leash to, to get that money back to the state as we're required to do.
Has the Chair of the Housing Task Force made, made the Task Force members aware of this recent decision by the legislature?
I don't know if I can answer that. The vice chair's here. I don't know whether he can answer that or not.
Do the member, Malcolm, do you mind coming forward? Are the members, are the members of the Task Force, Housing Task Force, aware of this repeal?
I believe Donna has sent an email out, but I don't want to speak for Donna on that. There's been conversations with some of the members of the Task Force that the, uh, the money was to go back.
Give me a second. I've got the email, and I'll look to see who's included on it.
With, with that being said, I mean, we would certainly want to honor the Task Force request of us to send a request to the legislature, but with what's taking place, it kinda, kinda moots the point. So I, I don't want, I don't want the Housing Task Force to think that we're ignoring their request, but it, it appears it's a mute, at a mute point right now.
Her, her email was to the Task Force, and she had sent an email saying, that I'm reading to you here, to put, to just put a pause on returning the money. That's what their request is.
Right.
They haven't requested us to send a letter to the governor or anything like that. But they ask us to put a pause on it. And then the email that came out from, from Donna, the chairman, was, my previous email appears to be unnecessary based on the language in the technical corrections bill, page fifty-four, and sent that to all of the Task Force members with that technical corrections bill I just described to you.
Okay, alright. So it's a mute point. Thank you, Malcolm.
So I guess what my suggestion is that we sit on it as long as we can sit on it to see if anything changes, anything happens. But again, once the governor signs it, then it becomes law, and then we're, unless they change the law again, then we're stuck.
Okay.
And so that, unless you tell me different, that will be my plan.
You don't need a motion to anything to that effect. No, it's a mute.
Right. Okay. Alright. Next is the presentation of the manager's proposed budget. If I'll come down here and make that.
Hey Bobby, before we get started, let's take just a five minute.
Mary Helen will love you.
And you probably need a bottle of water.
I call the Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order, and I'll turn it over to the county manager.
Good afternoon. I'm gonna read this because we need to read it into the record, and I know that it's boring and dry, but nonetheless,
Understand.
we're gonna do that. Um, Dave's gonna do the slideshow. Please feel free to stop me at any place along here to ask questions, and, and I'll be glad to answer them. And if I can't answer them, then Dave will be here, and between the two of us, we should be able to find you an answer. I'm gonna be reading from that, right. If you flip in there a couple pages, it's, it's, it's the May seventh to the Dare County Board of Commissioners budget message. I'm sorry?
It'd be helpful if, when you go to something, if you just tell the page number.
I don't know that mine's numbered, because I'm reading.
Can you guess at it?
Just between page one and the top.
I love it.
It's close.
I'll get a different version.
Gives a range.
I'm on page one.
Alright.
Alright. I hereby present the recommended Dare County budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five in the amount of two hundred and twenty-nine million, six hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars, with the general fund being at a hundred and thirty-six million, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and five dollars. For those on TV, the general fund is the one that is, the hundred and thirty-six million dollars is what's funded with the ad valorem taxes, and the difference between that and the two twenty-nine, that's the water fund, the sanitation fund, those funds that are, that are funded solely on the fees generated by those funds. The budget is balanced in compliance with the North Carolina Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act, and is aligned with the priorities and direction given by the Board of Commissioners. Uh, this is the update to the planned fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five budget prepared a year ago. Again, as you all know, we do a two-year budget, and we did a two-year budget last year. This is the second year of that budget, and we've simply taken what you all approved for the second year last year and added to that and changed that, as I'm gonna describe to you here in just a minute. The purpose of the county's annual budget process is to develop a fiscally responsible plan that enables the county to accomplish priorities established by the board. At prior retreats, the board provided the following strategic focus areas. Long-term financial planning for capital. You've directed us to maintain capital planning and stabilization of available funding through the use of a capital investment fund, and long-term capital planning and debt affordability models. Economic development. Continue beach nourishment efforts, address the demand for future projects, and determine additional project prioritization criteria utilizing the beach nourishment and debt affordability model. Education. Continue the partnership with the Dare County Schools, using an agreed-upon formula for local current expenses and the School Capital Investment Fund to adequately address future capital needs. Continue expansion of the College of the Albemarle Dare County through a completed capital project and utilization of the Dare Guarantee, a county-funded scholarship program. And human resources, to maintain improvements in salaries, benefits, and the working environment and the results of a salary and benefit study made in January of two thousand twenty-three. And then lastly, to make sure that we maintain all the current levels of service. Fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five budget. The recommended budget includes no general fund property tax increases. It preserves the high-quality service delivery to citizens, property owners, and visitors, and it addresses all the goals of the board. Page two. The table on that page shows the original two thousand twenty-four budget in the first column, the planned two thousand twenty-five budget in the second column. The planned budget was the plan that you all adopted as the second year of your plan last year. The third column is the manager's budget, and that's the budget I'm planning today. Oh, I'm sorry, the third column is what was requested from our, our department heads and from you all to put in the budget. And then the fourth column is what is in the budget proper. The requested budget. After budget requests were submitted by department and, by departments and outside agencies, the requested expenditures exceeded projected revenues, creating a general fund deficit of one point two million dollars or point five percent, point five percent. The major requests were two point one million for a four percent cost of living adjustment, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand to increase the local current expense for the Dare County Schools, four hundred and forty-two thousand for five new positions and various reclassifications and certifications pay, two hundred and forty-six thousand for increased operating costs for EMS billing, medical supplies, fleet maintenance, and insurance, a hundred and seventy-one thousand for parks and recreation for facilities repair, program supplies, staff, clothing, and uniforms, a hundred and forty-one thousand for College of the Albemarle for various operating and one-time costs, and a hundred and twenty-seven thousand for the sheriff for new grant funding expenditures. In the recommended budget, uh, the recommended budget does not include any property tax increase. The main, we will maintain the property tax rate at forty point oh five cents, just as we had last year. Requested items in the above section are included or changed as indicated below, and we'll go through a discussion of the major items in the following expenditure section. Expenditure increases are as follows. Two point one million for a four percent cost of living pay adjustment for full-time and part-time benefits for eligible employees. Two point, almost two point five million to increase the Dare County's local current expense funding. One point six million of that was to increase the staff supplements to the school staff, and eight hundred and sixty-five thousand of that was for the local current expense funding. We have four hundred and forty-four thousand for a five percent increase in health insurance costs, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand for new positions in the water, in, I'm sorry, in the information technology libraries, parks and recreation, sheriff and wastewater treatment. We have two hundred and forty thousand for various information technology operating costs, and we have a hundred and ninety-one thousand for insurance increases for our property liability and workers' compensation. On the revenue side, our current revenue projections are, first tell you that the worst revenue effects from COVID nineteen occurred in April and May of two thousand twenty. Since June of two thousand twenty, Dare County has experienced increased economic activity as shown on the table that you see there. Our revenue assumptions are for two thousand twenty-five. The tax base increased to a taxable value of seventeen point seven billion dollars. That's one point eight five percent more than the prior year. Our projected revenue is seventy million, seven hundred and one thousand, using the same tax rate of forty point oh five cents, and a collection rate of ninety-nine point six eight percent, which is up from last year's ninety-nine point six four percent. Our revenue for sales tax, sales tax are projected using three point two five percent for the A thirty-nine. A thirty-nine is which one, Dave? So the A thirty-nine is the local point of collection, and approximately three and a half percent, and for the A forty, and approximately three and a half percent for the A forty and the A forty-two, which are the statewide. Sure.
When all of the increases, you described them all, including the two and a half million for schools. Those are increases over the current year's expected result?
Yes.
Thank you, okay.
Yes. The county sheriff's sales tax collections has decreased from sixty-seven percent, sixty-seven point eight percent to sixty-six point four percent due to the property tax increase effective fiscal year two thousand twenty-four by Naxhead and Kill Devil Hills. Uh, the county's sales tax revenue will grow by approximately four hundred thousand dollars. Just a little bit of explanation. The way the statute works for the distribution of the sales tax is based on your ad valorem levy. And when your levy goes up, your tax goes, your cut goes up. And so it, communities that raise taxes relative to other communities get an increase, and the ones that don't raise taxes get a decrease. So when Naxhead and Kill Devil Hills go up, they get a greater share of the sales tax. But because we held our taxes constant, we didn't raise taxes, our sales tax revenue goes down by the equivalent amount.
Bobby, that's not based on the rate. That's based on the total collection. So, right?
Yes. Our occupancy tax is budgeted for two thousand twenty-five at three percent over the projected two thousand twenty-four amount. You've got a, a change, that graph sort of shows you the difference, that the blue line is the changes in the A thirty-nine local over time, and the red line is the one that's the statewide, or the population one, that does statewide tax over time. The average county property tax rate in North Carolina in two thousand twenty-four was sixty-four point five cents, with a low of twenty-seven cents and a high of a hundred and five cents. Dare County at forty point oh five cents was the tenth lowest property tax rate in the aggregate. So, um, the effective tax rate adjusted for the sales-to-assessment ratio for each county, Dare's tax rate for, for twenty-four would be adjusted twenty-five point three and ranked the fourth lowest. Uh, the average for the adjusted was fifty point four cents with a low of twenty-one point six cents and a high of eighty-five percent. The, the adjusted rate is to get all counties on equal footing, so that you're comparing apples and apples based on their levy on, on the size of their tax base. And so you take that sales to sac, sales-to-assessment ratio, you factor that in, and now it puts everybody on the same line to start, and then you look at what is your effective rate based on that. And when you look at that, then we're the, what, the sixth lowest, Dave, is that right? Fourth lowest. We're the fourth lowest in the state in our tax rate.
When is our next timing of assessment, Bobby? Do you know? What year we'll be doing another?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay.
Fiscal twenty-six.
Because this ratio is huge.
Right. Our fund balance appropriation and the fund balance, uh, the two thousand twenty-five- Our fund balance appropriation and the fund balance, the 2025 appropriated fund balance of $3,921,393 is within the board adopted policy of 3% or less of expenditures and it's at 2.88. So what that means is we've got 2.88 that we've budgeted out of fund balance in the operating budget to just cover the fluctuations because you can't get these numbers exact. 2023 general fund consolidated fund balance ended the year with $112,508,000. The 2023 unassigned fund balance ended the year at $41,784,000, which was $15,895,000 over the board policy minimum of 21%. Remember, that is a '23 number and our current number is 25%. So we've increased that minimum fund balance since those numbers came out. During the 2024, the amount over the unassigned fund balance target, the board used $6 million for capital, $932 for school capital, $1 million for the Dare County Education Teacher Housing, $1.5 million to the housing fund. The 2024 total fund balance is expected to decrease by the above one-time uses and to increase from operations from $1.5 million for a net decrease of approximately $7.9 million.
So just again, to do the quick math, that would say we are approximately, I'm looking at Dave, $34 million expected at the end of current fiscal '24. Unappropriated or unassigned fund balance.
Right.
Got it. Okay.
Which is healthy.
Yes, yes.
Expenditures. On the personnel side, the budget includes a 4% cost of living pay increase for full-time and part-time benefits eligible for employees at a cost of $2.1 million. That 4% is based on conversations that we had in our workshop as well as conversations with the towns to try to keep us on par with what's going on there so that we don't fall behind and then have to make those adjustments in mid-year that we had to do last year in order to keep up and retain our employees. The health plan has a 5% projected increase for 2025. The planned costs to the general fund are $444,700 more than the prior year, but a net decrease of $244,000 for 2024-25 combined. Increased numbers of employees with co-pays and increased number of employees with employee-only coverage have lowered the increase. The county continues to promote its wellness program and has expanded hours and coverage for its partnership with the Out of Banks Hospital for the Employees Wellness and Health Clinic Program. And you can see with those decreasing numbers, that has been beneficial.
Bobby, go back, go back. I think, I think we got it answered. Go back if you would, under the general, where you, fund balance appropriations on page five, you mentioned Dare Education Foundation Teacher Housing was a million and then 1.5 to the housing fund. What were you referring to with the housing fund?
Go back to begin, that was during 2024.
Okay.
We went, we added that million and a half to the housing, to that 12, to get to that $12 million number in our housing fund.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Position changes. The 2000 recommended budget adds four full-time positions, one part-time positions and other changes at a cost of $438,764. We added an infrastructure and security administrator position in information technology. With all the threats of cyber crimes and hacks and all that sort of thing, we needed a person to be dedicated to that and that's going to be the person that we're hiring for that. We added a part-time library assistant position. We added a leisure activity specialist at the Parks and Rec on the Roanoke Island Division. They were down one, had been down one for a while and this puts that back in place there. There's an addition of an administrative assistant for the sheriff. That position came as a result of, the state went to an automated records-keeping system for all data. Everything in the court system is now automated. Somebody has to keep up with all that and this person is there to do that. We need to add an addition of a wastewater treatment plant operator for our wastewater treatment with the addition of all these facilities, then it was more than the guy that we had could manage alone. We had changed three EMT positions to advanced EMT positions. We took a temporary EMS helicopter aircraft mechanic position to provide overlap for upcoming retirement. So we're basically hiring a guy before the person that's there is retired, give him some amount of time to learn on the job and get familiar with our helicopter before the retirement occurs. We increased the part-time rate to $15 an hour for the people that work in Parks and Again, we're talking about employee compensation. The budget recommends a 4% cost of living increase. We've talked about that. It maintains the 3% employer 401K plan compensation and it maintains the merit plan but changes from a one-time bonus to the merit pay being a part of your salary calculation. On the capital side, you look to the capital outlay section for the approved capital outlays that are budgeted. And when we come back to you in June, we'll have the CIP for both us and the school for you all to look at then. Dare County Schools, funding of the current expenses uses the school funding formula that we agreed on back in 2016. It resulted in a net increase of $865,577. It used a CPI rate of 3.7% and a match to the estimated state cost of living pay adjustments of 4.4% for their certified position personnel and 3% for their classified personnel. Those numbers were numbers that we got from the Board of Education. The local current expense increases by an additional $1.6 million for supplements, including fringes for the school staff. The additional amount should place Dare County Schools in the top 20% of all school systems for supplements and in the top two systems for all local funding. Local funding for school operating costs increases to $30.8 million, which is composed of $29.3 million for local current expense and $1. roughly $5 million for county-employed school nurses and school resource officers. The pupil enrollment projections are, I'll just go through those for, from NCDPI, the projection for 2023, the fall was 5,036 students. The actual number of students was 4,989. NCDPI does not provide projections for 2024. For the last 11 years, 2015 through 2025, the local current expense funding excluding nurses and resource officers and the five-year annual deferred maintenance funding in 2015 through 2019 has increased 45.55% from $20,193,000 to $29,392,000. Over that same 11-year period, the pupils have increased by 0.56% from 4,978 students to 4,989 students. And that, those numbers prompted the question that Commissioner Overman asked earlier, you know, about the ADA numbers and the future need for class space. Budgeing for our various departments.
Before we leave that one? This is just kind of an observation. If we took 2015 as a base year, over the next one, two, three, four, five years, costs went up 8% over a five-year period. If we take 2020 as a base year, costs went up 35% over the same five-year period. So during 2015 to 2020, we were experiencing 1.5% to 2% kind of per pupil cost rise or a relatively stable environment. And we have just exploded up 35% in just those five years. Okay. Well, I hadn't actually looked at that until just now.
And none of that's like new money, that's all CPI-driven from?
That, yeah, that's the sad part. We aren't up 35% adding, you know, 25 more teachers and reduced classrooms and added programs. This is just to keep up with the CPI out-of-control inflation.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks, Bobby, I'm sorry.
Sure. For our departments, in the animal shelter, the budget adds $28,000 to the SPCA contract for their operating costs and it includes a one-time funding for $43,500 for a vehicle. At the College of the Albemarle, the budget maintains the $250,000 for local scholarships to the College of the Albemarle. It adds $71,000 for additional operating costs and provides $45,000 for one-time funding to connect the fire panel and the professional arts building to the new building alarm system. In emergency medical services, there's a $246,000 for increased operating costs for EMS billing, medical supplies, fleet maintenance and insurance. And a large part of that is for supplies, medical supplies have gone off the roof and have become very expensive. In information technology, $240,000 is added for various operating costs concentrated in security services and server releases. In Parks and Recreation, $171,000 is added for program supplies for staff clothing and uniforms. Again, the sheriff has added 127, almost 128 to various line items for grant-funded costs. In our insurance, $191,000 is added to the various departments for increased property liability and workers' compensation coverages. Funding for our nonprofits, the budget maintains the same funding levels for the recovery corps as we've done in the past. $91,000 is added to nonprofit funding. There's a $10,000 increase to the room at the end. There's a $6,000 increase for Hatteras meals. There's $50,000 back up to the Hatteras meals. In our workshop, that was not included. After the workshop, we included that request and so that was a change from what we talked about there. We have $50,000 for the Friends of Jockeys Ridge for the 50th anniversary and we have $25,000 for the Dare County Arts Council for their 50th anniversary that you heard about earlier in our meeting. Transfers to other funds, the transfer to the capital investment fund has decreased $600,000 from what we would, had been doing at $10,425,000 to $9,825,000. The capital investment model is expected to maintain the target coverage ratio of That's the fund balance to annual debt service by using an assumed annual land transfer tax growth of 2%. The reduction, that changed, that reduction in what we put in the capital fund funded a portion of those staff supplements that we talked about earlier. That was $600,000 of that 1.6 million that we put into staff supplements came from that The capital investment fund, the capital investment fund is a separately budgeted part of the general fund. For financing reporting purposes, the capital investment fund is consolidating the general fund in the annual audit report along with the disaster recovery, LOSA, the home health and hospice restricted, the stormwater, the community development and housing and the school capital investment funds. In conjunction with the capital investment fund, the county's financial advisor, DEC Associates, maintain a capital planning and debt affordability model. Use of a capital investment fund separates budgeting for operations from that of the capital. The general fund's contribution to the capital investment fund, as I said above, will be We talked about the model just a second ago. Even with that reduction in fund, based on the assumptions that we're using in the model, then the model still works and we can still fund our capital fund. The model also includes plans for major items, roof replacements, heating and air-condition replacements, major equipment replacements and major maintenance for Dare Med Flight Airbus helicopter. Model development is in process and expected to be presented with the board, to the board on the 5th. The approved capital improvement plan will be incorporated into the final budget document when we bring it to you on the 5th. Our other funds. Our disaster recovery fund is a separately budgeted part of the general fund. It budgets for Soft Bear and disaster recovery services and $100,000 for the initial responses to any emergency. The board policy is to maintain an ending disaster recovery total fund balance, total fund balance of 1% of the general fund budget at June 30th and at June 30th, 2023, that percentage was 1.21%. In the E911 fund, the budget includes additional funds requested to the E911 board and those additional expenditures are conditioned upon the state funding approval. In the beach nourishment fund, the beach nourishment fund is set, per the beach nourishment financial model, 2025 expenditures include debt services for all projects completed in 2024, those being Avon, Bucks and Naxhead, Kill Devil Hills, Kitty Hawk, Southern Shores and Duck. In the sanitation fund, the sanitation fund's property tax rate is unchanged at 11 cents per the recommendation of the Solid Waste Study completed in 2022. The reported model plans for future 1 cent increases to 13% in 2027. The 2025 budget continues the study's recommendation that the county switch to a higher-grade, more expensive truck chassis with a longer life and lower maintenance cost, resulting in a lowered lifetime cost. The 2025 budget includes, per the study, a higher number of truck replacements, five instead of three, and financing those trucks over 59 months instead of 36 months. In the water fund, the water fund model, which was done by Raftelis Financial Consulting Update for 2025, has completed and requires a 5% rate increase for 2025. You can see there's a, I don't know if it's on the model that you have in front of you, but in your thing, it's got, you know, the increases by the model plan. The recommended water CIP is in process and again, it will be presented to the board on June 5th and the capital, and the approved capital plan will be incorporated into that final budget document. In our internal service funds, the county maintains two internal service funds, the insurance fund and the fleet maintenance fund, and adopts financial plans for each as discussed under the general fund. Then the health insurance fund, the plan has a 5% projected increase for 2025. The county has also switched to high deductible workers' compensation plan in 2024, which it continues. In the fleet maintenance fund, the fleet maintenance fund is projected to maintain its fund balance at approximately $500,000. Finally, we have the volunteer fire departments. They have, the fire districts have requested rate increases, the Rodanthie Way Salvage requested an increase of 2 cents from 0.755 cents to 0.955 cents. You received a letter from Mr. McEwen that you all should have copies of in your information. The Martins Point, it's not the Martins Points, the Southern Shores Fire Department has asked for a tax increase for Martins Point from 39 cents. They want an increase of, from 0.0484 to 0.0523. I think there has been some correspondence from the Martins Point Homeowners Association to that, saying that they were on board. The fire chief's here to speak to that if you have questions about that and I would suggest that we call him up in just a second. And then finally, we have the Roanoke Island Fire Department requesting an increase of 0.55% from 0.0366 to 0.0421. We invited the fire department people here, I don't, let's see, we've got all three fire departments here, if you all have questions when I conclude so that you can come back and decide what I'll, what I'll need is guidance on whether to put these tax increases in the final, the budget document or not. The board has requested to hold a public hearing on the budget during the board meeting on June 3rd. The board may schedule additional workshops or may adopt the budget anytime after the public hearing. Appreciate all the board's work and the input that you got. I think this incorporates the requests that you made and I also appreciate the work that our staff did, particularly Dave and Sally helping me guide through this and our department heads for maintaining, you know, their fiscal austerity and doing what we ask them to do to maintain the second year of their two-year budget they submitted last year. With that, that would be my submission of the proposed 2025 budget.
Bobby, with respects to the volunteer fire department tax rates, in the past, we've always asked them to confirm that they've discussed this with their constituents in their areas for buy-in and I'm just curious what the three have to say with respect to that.
There's someone here from Rodanthie Way Salvage, I'll let them answer that question.
Elaine Hooper.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Elaine Hooper. I am the secretary of Chickamaconco Bank's Fire Department. We did reach out to all of our community members, all of our constituents, specifically through the Rodanthie Way Salvage Civic Association. Their bylaws prevent them from Their bylaws prevent them from officially supporting anything political, any sort of tax increases that come requested. However, discussing with their individual members, the response was overwhelmingly positive. Our current two first-due engines are twenty-nine and thirty-one years old, respectively, and even for a regular car, but more so for a fire engine, that is positively geriatric. So, we're, our new engine is coming in, it's gonna have a twenty-twenty-four chassis, do roughly about four-hundred days out, so we should have it in twenty-twenty-five. Financing for that, the cost comes in just over a million dollars. It will be able to reach the ocean side of homes, and many of our homes that are in areas that the pavement is in questionable shape. Many of you are familiar with the Rodanthie area and our fastly receding shoreline, and we will be able to service those houses with this engine.
Great, good deal.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Elaine.
Thank you.
Chairman, commissioners, our request is mainly due to just the cost of inflation. I had a meeting with the Martins Point Homeowners Association on February twenty-ninth, and I have a letter confirming from their president that they support the increase. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to take them.
That's, that's, that's perfect, that's what we needed to hear.
Exactly, short and sweet.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm all about short and sweet. I'm Radcliffe Hester, and I am the president of Roanoke Island Volunteer Fire Department, and I've already spoken to most everyone up here already. I'm just echoing, you know, the same issues about cost. We do have, and we have been, we did have a special finance department meeting, and we approved this request. But basically, we are looking at replacing our engine one-seven-two, one-seven-one, and the same engine that we're replacing now, when we bought it back in two thousand eighteen, was about seven-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. Now it's about one-point-one million, same exact setup. And we also have a ladder truck that's come and due for replacement, these are just replacement items, that when we bought it back in two thousand, what's the year here? Two thousand, it was seven-hundred thousand dollars. That same apparatus is closer to two million, so that's where we are.
Thank you, Judge.
So if you have any questions, let me know, that's the short of it.
What's your replacement, so you said you bought one in two thousand eighteen that you're replacing now in two thousand twenty-four?
We replaced engine one-seven, let's see here, that was the south station engine.
So it was a seven-year-old engine?
No, 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 we were, it was from two thousand six.
Okay.
We replaced it in two thousand eighteen, so.
Radcliffe, y'all talked this over with the commissioners in Manio?
No, to our finance department with the fire department.
Okay, but was there any outreach to the, to the?
To the community.
Community? No.
No.
Because that's where, I mean, that's where the tax is coming from.
Right.
I mean, we need to, we need to have them vetted.
Well, one thing that I did some research, and Roanoke Island has the lowest tax rate of all the different fire departments in the county. We're at the very bottom, so.
I mean, I understand that, but typically, what we've required is some vetting in the community before we approve, before we approve a tax increase.
Yeah, by way of context, Mr. Chairman, if I lived in Manio and my home was valued at six-hundred thousand dollars, this request would amount to an annual increase of thirty-five dollars to my bill.
I mean, I understand all that.
Yeah, I'm just, I agree with you.
I understand all that.
I've heard from Manio, and I've heard from Roanoke Island, and I've heard plenty, so I agree with your assessment.
Yeah, if you'll, if you'll get back to us, we need to maybe put a hold on.
When is Manio's next meeting? They usually have one right about the time we have.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. No, no, the board of commissioners.
The commissioners meeting.
I'm not sure.
They meet on Wednesdays, but I'm not sure which Wednesday.
Well, we have, we have spoken to the town before, if that's what you're asking.
So, in the past, I'll just use Collington. Collington came to us with a similar request several years ago, and we've had others as well, and the board asked them to go out in the community and get community feedback to see if there was community support for a tax increase to benefit the fire department, and where they've had those, the community support, the board has supported those. Where, where, in that case, Collington hadn't done that, then they postponed that tax increase for a year to allow Collington the opportunity to do that community support, and for a while, that has been the policy that the board has followed. That's what they're asking, they're asking for some community engagement to get a sense that the community's on board with what you're asking us to do on your behalf.
I see. Would that be something done at the June sixth commissioners' meeting? Is that what you're saying?
If you can have the community engagement done between now and June and come back and say, yes, we've got that, and the community supports it, then, yes, it could be done at that meeting.
Bobby, with the support of the, of the Manio commissioners, that wouldn't be sufficient, wouldn't it? If they, I mean, they're the representatives of folks.
I think that's gonna be a matter of what is sufficient to you.
Yeah, it's, typically, we get the community involved, just like Collington, I mean, they reached out to all the people and residents in Collington several years back, and.
So, much as the chief said, they went to, Collington went to the Colligan Harbor Association, which is.
Right.
The most of their constituents.
Right.
And I don't know what the Colligan Harbor Association did, but they came back and said they supported it, and that was then sufficient for you all to give them what they wanted, based on what, and similar things, I think, were done maybe in Buxton or Hatteras.
Buxton.
Buxton, where they went to the community as well and came back. So, I think what we have done in the past, if there's some entity that's representative of the community and they support it, then you've accepted that. Now, whether that, we've never had it where we had a town.
Yeah, what I'm saying, the municipality's got a mayor and a board, I would think that would suffice.
Yeah, me too.
So, yes.
Yeah, I don't have a problem, as long as they take the heat, as long as they take the heat.
Yeah.
Well, the, the fire department has a contract with the town for coverage within the town, so whatever that request is to the town, it's part of what they're doing, the same as us, and included in their general fund budget.
Since Roanoke Island also covers Wanchies, maybe some of the Wanchies.
Association?
Yes.
And it covers, it covers north end, too.
Let's hear from them. Let's hear from them.
Covers the north end of Roanoke Island as well, but it's not within the town limits.
And from my understanding, again, I haven't been in, I've been in the department for about ten years, but from my understanding, Roanoke Island is one of the three departments in the state that's, that has a charter, that has a contract where we could adjust our rates more freely?
I don't know what you're saying.
There's, Roanoke Island, again, this is just from hearing some of the other finance members from before, we have, we're one of three volunteer fire departments in the state that has more freedom to adjust our rate. You can adjust your rate within the town, a many of the contracts you. Right. Not doing incorporated part of the fire district. But not, not with the county.
But you're not saying you don't need county approval to adjust your rate, are you?
I'd have to get more information on that, but as, from my understanding, in the past, Roanoke Island is one of the three counties in the state that has more freedom to do, have flexibility.
I understand what you're saying, but if I was gonna put a tax increase on somebody, you can rest assured, I would want their blessing.
Well, I'll follow it whatever way we need to try to make this happen.
Talk to them.
Okay. You can just talk to Melissa Dickerson, for starters.
So.
Right.
The, an issue that is potentially common, suppose the town of Manio has agreed to that tax increase, and they have that tax increase in their budget. If we don't increase the tax similarly, then the folks in unincorporated Dare are getting services at a different rate than the people in Manio from the same people that provide it. We have a similar issue with Southern Shores and Martins Point some time ago, and we worked through that with the town to make sure everything was fair, but, I mean, I guess that's.
I think Commissioner House mentioned that they ought to, they ought to contact the Wine Cheese Civic Association, or Mann's Harbor, whatever, vice versa, just, just to let them know what's, what they, what they plan.
That's right. We add that on that.
Pardon?
And actually, they approached us at some point, because our rates haven't been increased.
Oh, well, that's a good thing, then, yeah.
Right, so they're, they actually approached us, because again, for example, from two thousand eleven to two thousand thirteen, the county rate was point, I was rounding off, point zero-three. From two thousand fourteen to two thousand twenty, it was point zero-four, and then from two thousand twenty-one until now is point zero-three. So basically, all that time where all the costs were going up, our rate actually went down. But the town actually approached us and said, hey, all these other departments have already increased, you guys need to get on board, so that's all I can say about that.
Yeah, yeah. Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
So, with regard to the tax rate increase, which ones do I put in the budget, which ones do I not?
Well, I'd, I'd put the five-fives that they're requesting, and, and we'll see how, what the chips fall.
So, so include all three of the rate increases in the budget?
Yeah, I mean, we got satisfactory responses from Waves and Salvo and Martins Point.
Okay, so we'll put them all, including Roanoke Island, in there, and then we'll wait to see what comment is.
Yeah, that's what, I mean, that's my suggestion, what's aboard.
That way, that way, because I feel like we're gonna get support anyway.
Yeah.
Might as well keep it in there. If it comes back and say, no, they don't want it, then we can actually pull it. Okay. All right, any questions about the budget?
Good presentation, Bobby.
Yeah, it's very thorough.
Good job.
No, I don't have.
Shocking.
I know it's tough.
I had to do it, boys, I had to do it, sorry.
I was ready.
So bad.
You're gonna, okay, he's done.
All right, that brings us to item seventeen.
Fourteen?
No, no.
I need a motion to schedule a public hearing.
Motion to schedule a public hearing.
Second by couch.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House, second by Commissioner Couch, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
All right, yeah, we need to go to item fourteen, that's the amendment to the capital project ordinance for the EMS projects, phases one and two.
Thanks.
Yep.
So first, we're asking you to adopt a capital project ordinance amendment for the two thousand twenty-three projects. We've gone through and updated our estimates with Barn Hill again on where we're gonna stand once we're finished. We want to increase the savings that we're gonna use for those projects by two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand from eight, our original estimate was eight-thirty, so it'll be a million and seventy-five thousand to use from those projects to the twenty-four projects. We'd also previously planned to use a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand of interest income over budget, so that's a total of a million two that we're gonna use from the twenty-three projects and bond issues toward the twenty-four projects. Then we're gonna ask you to adopt amendment for the twenty-four projects. I waited to budget the sales tax until I had a better idea of what was gonna happen with Southern Shores, Kill Devil Hills, and the Med Flight Hangar. So, for all three of the new projects, we're gonna budget sales tax in the budget, which actually reduces the total. The only increase in those is we're adding a hundred-and-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety dollars to paint the Mann's Harbor Volunteer Fire Department and the community building, and to replace and upgrade the overhead doors of the fire department, so they will be the same overhead doors that are on the EMS station, the same design, same door, everything. So the net change on the expense side is we're decreasing the projects by seventy-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-two. And then there's also some changes on the revenue side, which is the sources side, where the money is coming from, from the bonds. We're actually reducing the debt proceeds by three-point-two million dollars to twenty-three million eight-hundred-and-thirty. We're increasing what's called original issue premium by two million six-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars. What that means is if we sell a five-thousand-dollar bond, we're gonna get paid more than five-thousand dollars for that bond, it's just the way the market's currently structured, and we'll, yeah, earn almost two-point-seven million from that. We're increasing the interest we're gonna earn on the construction fund, we sell the bonds, the money goes to the Bank of New York, gets trustee to hold that money, and we draw it down during construction, so we're actually gonna lock in with the use of a consultant, a, an investment portfolio that'll match the draw schedule, and we will lock in whatever the numbers are tomorrow, but when we ran them last week, it was six-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand And as I said before, part of the sources, we're increasing the amount by two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand that we're using from last year's. So, we're asking you to adopt the two amendments, one to the Series twenty-three A limited obligation bonds capital project ordinance, and one for the Series twenty-four LOBs capital project ordinance.
Pleasure, the board.
Move to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman to approve the two capital projects ordinance amendments, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bassnight, any further questions? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Can I do one more?
Yes, sir.
Just on the bond side, we, we had the first pre-sale call yesterday afternoon, we've got the local government commission meeting starting at one-thirty today that I have to be in for debt approval. We've got a pre-sale call at four-thirty, and the sale happens tomorrow between nine and one o'clock, and we did get the debt ratings, both of them were affirmed at the same debt rating we had before.
Awesome.
Of double-A plus, and I sent those out, and I noticed since, or Andrew Carter, financial advisor, told me that I had not seen it, on the, on the Moody's rating, they, they do a lot of transparency now, and it's a lot of analytics, and you've got the report, but on page seven of that report, they give you their scorecard and how much each item is weighed, you know, so much economics is thirty-five percent, and et cetera. Their scorecard indicated outcome is AAA. Our rating is double-A one, which is essentially a double-A plus, and the notch is just for environmental hurricane risk, and, and to be fair, kind of a concentrated economy in tourism, but otherwise, all your other metrics are AAA.
Fantastic.
That's great.
Fantastic.
Okay, and if it's okay, I'm gonna leave and go to the meeting.
Thanks, Dave. Just a couple of questions, Dave.
No, I'm teasing.
Thank you, Dave.
They're still saying the.
Shoot me, shoot me, shoot.
It brings us to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have the approval of the minutes for April second and April ninth. We have the tax collectors' report, have the budget amendment for the nine-one-one board PSAP grant, have the budget amendment for the Oregon Inlet Administration, we have a budget amendment for the bomb center, budget amendment for the sanitation department, grant certification that we have no overdue tax debts, have Health and Human Services, Public Health, ARHC, a mini grant, have a Motorola service agreement for the Sheriff's Department, a drop counter subscription service for the order use customer portal, a Cape Hatters electric cooperative contract for Burrus Field, a Sistel Business Equipment Company statement of work, and we have two NC Highway Program local government resolutions, one for personnel overtime and one for the law enforcement liaison.
Move to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House and Couch to approve the consent agendas presented, is there a second?
Second.
Second by the vice chairman, any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I submitted a couple of minor typographical corrections that have been accepted by the secretary, they do not change the content, and I just would request that the motion include those amendments.
Yes, sir.
We're ready to go.
All right.
I'm good.
Is the maker of the motion and the second approve?
Yes, agreed.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
That brings you to the board appointments. The first one you had was the Stumpy Point Community Center Board. The person that they were trying to appoint isn't really eligible, so we're going to remove that one and come back to you with an eligible person at a later date. Number two is the Veteran Advisory Council, Dr. Kevin Wallace and Justin O'Sullivan. Both have terms expiring this month, and they both wish to be reappointed.
Move to reappoint.
There's a motion on the floor by the Vice Chairman to appoint. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. There is a seat that is held on that board, Veteran Board, by former Commissioner Jack Shea. And it is my recommendation that, and I, and I'm knowing Jack as, as I do, I think he would certainly want this to take place for another veteran to serve on that, on that board in, in his, in his seat. And I'm recommending we appoint Christian Hayman to that seat.
Second up.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen, for doing that.
Thank you.
That's the Presiding Board of Adjustment, Jay Hart's term expires this month, and he wishes to be reappointed.
Move to reappoint.
Second. There's a motion on the floor by the Vice Chair, has been seconded by Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Then your upcoming appointments in June, you have the College of Alborel Board of Trustees, one term, the Extraterritorial Jurisdiction District for the Town of Southern Shores, one term, the Federation and Center Advisory Board, four, four terms, the Hatters Community Center, two terms, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, five terms, the Mann's Harbor Community Center Board, two terms, expiring, the Roanoke Island Community Center Board, two terms, the Rhodanthi Wave Cybawal Community Center Board, two terms, expiring, and the Waterways Commission, four terms, expiring. In July, you have the Eastlake Community Center Board, one term, expiring, the Naiming Wildlife Commission with four terms, expiring, the Older Adult Services Board, one term, expiring, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council, eight terms, expiring, the Wine Cheese Community Center Board with two terms, expiring. And then in August, you have the ABC Board with two terms, expiring, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council with one term, expiring, and the Virginia Estillit Community Center Advisory Board with four terms, expiring.
Bobby, did we do the Stumpy Point Community Center?
We do. That was number one, and we've got, we had to remove that from today's.
Was it ineligible applicant?
It was an ineligible applicant. He said he's going to come back.
Sorry, yeah.
And that would be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, County Manager. That brings us to Commissioner Business and Managers Business, and I'll come back to you and see if you have anything else.
No, sir, I don't have anything else.
All right. Thank you. Our Public Information Officer, Ms. Hester, do you have anything for us?
I just had a, I was going to mention about the Household Hazardous Waste Collection scheduled for this week. That's a, people appreciate that opportunity to get rid of some of the materials that can't, things like paints and aerosol cans, cleaners, chemicals, insecticides, all those kind of things. More information on the county website, but there are three different collection dates. There'll be Kitty Hawk Town Hall on Thursday, this Thursday, May ninth, and then in Buxton at the Transfer Station on Friday, May tenth, and then the Roanoke Island Collection is on this Saturday at the Public Works Facility. So I did want to mention that. And it's also hurricane preparedness week. So just a reminder that it's that time of year to start planning. And the, our guide with lots of information is available at the county website, the RNC.gov, and also a reminder to, for reentry passes, always something to think about this time of year. And Caitlin, on our social media outlets, we're running some pop quizzes with some giveaways this week, so.
Super.
Trying to get some interaction from folks.
Pretty appreciate the, the PR department just asking people to assess the potential for damage. I thought that was good. I, I went out and took a good look around my yard.
Good. Did you answer the quiz?
Yeah. No, I did not do the quiz. I'm afraid of failing.
Well, I'm, I'm, and thanks for that info, Dorothy. I'm, I'm, I'm just, we're, we're blessed to have as good a PR department as we do. I mean, just like yesterday, you know, one of the major networks reaches out to me for a statement concerning the Buxton situation. And, and I said, I'll, I'll be happy to give you a, a statement. I'll send it to you tomorrow morning. I get an email back, oh, I need it. I need it right now.
Yeah, I saw that.
And, and, and I'm thinking, you know, and I politely sent, sent him an email back and said, look, in the future, you know, I don't want to make statements on behalf of my board without having an opportunity to discuss it with my board, you know. Well, I just got this an hour ago, and I just, I just wanted a response. And so I said, in the future, you need to give me more time. But, but, I mean, we're dealing with that all the time. And my point is, working with Dorothy and her department to, to respond to those requests, we get on the phone and we talk and we bounce ideas back and forth and, and, and had a response.
Excellent response.
Well, thank you. And, and, and that's what we do. And they do a very good job of it. But it, it's very frustrating when, when you get, constantly get that.
Dealing with the media?
You know.
What?
From wanting responses. No, Mary Helen's very good about that. She's, she'll give me plenty of time to respond.
Oh, yeah, of course.
These major, these major networks, you know, they want something yesterday when they just.
Gotten popular with them all of a sudden.
Right.
I mean, it's every day seeming like.
Right. Well, I, I, I will have to say, I had the public information, public information officers, Dorothy, reach out to Channel Ten, you know, because they, they do this really, really push to get answers. And then I, I've had built a pretty good relationship personally with Dan Kennedy and Channel Thirteen. And I, and I texted him, and I said, Dan, we got an issue in, in Buxton, environmental issue. Can you call me? And he immediately called me, and I told him what was going on. He, he sent a crew down here and right away. So we, we try to have good relationships with them. And this was the third network that was the one that reached out to me yesterday, wanted a quick response. So, but for the most part, we get enough time. But from time to time, you get, you get those. I need it today for a story today.
Well, our guys met, met her deadline, met that deadline, so.
Right. So, anyway, my point is, Dorothy, thank you for what your department does.
It was helpful to talk at three with you.
Yeah.
And just getting a little more clarification from her from, about what she was.
Right, right. Okay, David's left, so I know he doesn't have anything else for us. At this time, I, we come to Commissioners Business. And Danny, do you mind kicking that off?
Uh, not at all. Matt, have you got a couple of pictures for me? Matt?
Wake up, Matt.
No, I know better than this. Second question might depend on him. Going back to early part of the year, County Manager and myself, we've been monitoring a situation with the waterline down there in Buxton. And while currently there's no, there's no danger presently, we tend to agree that we need a long-term solution. It's got to be found. I got a call from the Electric Co-op there because they are concerned because they have put in, they had to do an environmental review, and it's been delayed. And because it was delayed, given the situation down there with a couple of poles in the water, they've had to rebid it. And it went from 700,000 to one and a half million. So they, they have asked to start a dialogue with County Manager and hopefully myself. I mean, if you're looking at the pictures, you know, there's a tractor trailer going by. Again, it's currently, it is not in any danger, but we're all focused on the ocean side erosion. And we, there's sand side erosion too. That's a pretty vulnerable spot there. So I'd like to propose, if the County Manager and myself, the EVP, the Vice President of the Co-op, maybe a DOT rep and a Park Service rep, maybe Avon Property Owners Association, because they would be the, they would be impacted if, if we had a major hurricane or something, or something compromised that line. But if we could just have an introductory call and just meet, I think that would help, help find a solution going forward.
So, so what, what you showed was a line and a meter that you read the line? Is that what?
No, that's the waterline. We just did about.
I know it's a waterline, but that's the meter that you, you read it? You read the volume? What, what is that plastic thing on top of it?
That's just a marker that one of the kiter's put on there to be careful.
Oh, oh, I got you. Okay.
Not run over it. I mean.
I didn't know if that was some kind.
I thought it was a reader.
I thought it was some kind of a reader.
Well, it's intensely, I mean, there were about 350 people right in that area this past weekend. There's a kiter's regatta going on down there. And I mean, there's kites and from north of Buxton all the way into, uh, all over and beyond. So.
So what is it that you want us to agree?
I just, I just would like to have an introductory meeting and start moving toward some kind of solution. We're monitoring it, but we need to have a solution if something happens.
What is a solution? What are we talking? I don't know what we're talking about.
Shoreline preservation.
Yeah, shoreline preservation.
Yeah. So we want to put beach nourishment there or reroute the waterline?
You just, you do, you can even put riprap. You can do all kinds of stuff you can do. Something to stabilize the shoreline.
There's some questions about riprap. That's not the preferred alternative.
Well, I'm just, general.
No, yeah, yeah, I understand.
This is in a vacuum, though I came up today. But William has been monitoring this. He's aware of this, our order director. And we've been on it for a while and know that it's there. And I've talked to him multiple times to be sure we don't have any danger, any issues. And we do not at the moment. But it is a place that is eroding. We've had discussions with the Park Service. We've talked about doing beach nourishment there. We looked at using sand from Avon Harbor there at one point. That sand has materials in it that you can't put on a beach. And so that failed. Again, looked at sand sources to try to do a nourishment project, have had discussions with the Park Service about that. They believe that we need to do something as well. We have had some cursory discussions with DOT, but not really. Most of our discussions have been with us and the Park Service to try to come up with a plan to do something there. Part of the problem that we have is there are a number of living shoreline options that you could do there, but they all require some type of structure, some whether it's oysters or vegetation or whatever. And that beach area, and that is a highly used area as.
Yeah, what, what section is that? Go back to that.
Kite, kite, uh, kite point.
It's Canadian Hole.
Yeah, and south. Yeah, there's.
Oh, it's south of there.
It's Canadian Hole and south.
Yes, sir. Canadian Hole, and then coming south is Kite Point, which is crazy popular.
Gotcha.
Yeah. You don't want to put oyster shells there.
Well, and that.
Some concern about putting hardened structures in there.
Yeah.
To do that. So, again, I, I, I don't want to create any alarm. It isn't a, a problem at the moment. It is something that we are looking at and monitoring. Certainly happy to meet with all of these folks. Again, I think what probably to meet, just to meet, doesn't do us much good unless we have some ideas what our solutions might be. And then we can talk among ourselves about what they are, what's permitted, how much they cost, who's going to pay what. Because I think that the electric company has some interest in preserving their poles.
Yes, sir. Has the Vice President reached out to you yet?
The Vice President of.
Of Susan Fly.
Matt, go back.
I, I, I suggest that because.
I'll follow up with her.
Yes, sir.
Hold, hold it there. Yeah, I, yeah, you can see, you can see, what is that, a couple of feet or so.
You're on twelve.
Yeah, it's, it's not.
From the level of twelve.
It's not too far beyond the right of way. I mean, it's one, one significant storm event this fall could expose that even more. I don't want to be alarmist, but I'm being asked about it. But I think, Bobby, that's a good suggestion. If he and I can talk to the, to the Co-op manager, that could probably do it. Okay.
I'll call her, and then if we, when we get to a place where we have a, a potential solution, we can bring all of the stakeholders in and talk about that as well.
I should have given you heads up anyway, but I just got a call yesterday afternoon.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks for bringing that up, Danny. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Bateman?
Yes, sir. Had the opportunity to do the opening remarks at the Custom Rod Show. A lot of good business down here this weekend because of those guys. And that group has put back 125,000 dollars into their nonprofits and children and youth partnerships. So they really do a great job. Michael Tillot and Richard and Sarah. Also did the walk for suicide awareness on Saturday. Had a good, good turnout for the first one they've ever had. A lot of, a lot of people there, a lot of, very informative concerning, you know, suicide and where, how it gets there and how the devastating effects it has on families. I had a very heartwarming thing that happened. I went to a friend's house to help them out. And as I walked by the refrigerator, I noticed there was a, a letter from Deer County Sheriff Doughty. And I was reading the letter, and it was a, a letter congratulating their child for being on the A honor roll. And the lady explained to me that two days earlier, the, the child unbeknownst to them had a problem that she could not go to school. And she was so upset because she was scared that she was not going to get in one of those letters or miss because the day of the school would jeopardize that. I think that's such a cool thing that that guy does, send that letter out. I never knew that. I don't know if, did you all know that app?
He's done that for years.
Oh, really?
He's done it for you.
He has.
That's big. I mean, I didn't, didn't have a clue. So anyway, that's a, a big thing there. On the other side, when we're talking about substance abuse, 85% of all the individuals incarcerated in many detention center are substance abuse reasons. And so we're, the money well spent that comes from the opioid crisis that goes to the intention, detention center is very useful. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please, Chairman.
Thanks, Chairman. As always, I'd like to congratulate and thank our service pin recipients, Missy Steve and Kimberly, and also our employee of the month, Steve Barrett, Barrett. It's, it's hard to run this county without these folks, and we certainly do appreciate them. I'd also like to say a special thank you to the Governor's Volunteer Service Awards, Karen Debelis, Jenny Flowers, Lee Goldman, Susan Lee, Paul and Kathy Lishewitz, Lisa Menierich, Fred Parker, Collette Walker, and Debbie Swick. Deer County is blessed with multiple nonprofits and individuals who work for the benefit of the people of this county and for this county itself. It is, it is absolutely wonderful to see this. Not, I don't know how many folks realize that not all, not all counties are blessed to have these kind of folks with these kind of hearts that take their personal time to work on things important to folks who are less fortunate than them or for whatever reason, work to the benefit of this county. And we certainly want to appreciate that. On April 18th, we had Dr. Stephen Lloyd here who did two presentations on substance use and mental health at Jeanette's Pier. And if you missed it, you really missed a great, great, two great, in fact, presentations on this subject. Those were videoed by our public, public information folks. And those videos will be available very, very soon. They're going through the editing process and that sort of thing now. But hopefully, we'll get to watch those. And the, the two presentations were kind of the same but slightly different because of our professionals in the, in the second, second group. But you want to be sure to try to catch that if you can. And lastly, being Commissioner Emeritus, I kind of wanted to let you know that I'm gaining a year on all of you all tomorrow. And that you will not catch up. So. So, thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner House.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. In response to several constituents that I've been talking with, and I'm glad that Ms. Debbie Swick brought, brought that up during public comment, was for a ban on releasing balloons. And I've done a lot of research on this and it was, didn't quite have enough time to get it all presented and ready for today. And I talked with the, the town manager of Duck and they, the Duck Town did a lot of research on it as well. And I was finding out the same thing that they had already found out. And I was really impressed with the ordinance that they put out. And so, I'm with the consensus of this board, I'd like to get up with our county manager and county attorney to go through it to make sure it's, it's something that we can adopt and live with. So, I wanted to just make, make, pretty much get a consensus of board that this is a track we might want to go down. And also, under the same thing with the balloons, on four thirty of this year, House Bill nine twenty-two, Marine Life Protection Act is under the same balloon ban as well for the entire state. So, I'll have that coming forward and ready for us at our next Commissioner meeting.
Good.
Come up with, with that. Our day in history, there's several things, but I think one of them is kind of unique. In eighteen sixty-seven, Alfred Nobel patented dynamite. Who was Alfred Nobel? You ever heard of the Nobel Peace Prize? That was him. He actually read in his obituary, he read in his obituary that he was an instrument of death. It was a French media person who did not check his facts. It was his brother that had died, but had his name on it. So, and that's, that's when he decided he was not going to go down in history as the destruction of man. And that's when he took all the money that he had bade off the patent of dynamite and turned that into the foundation for the Nobel Peace Prize. And for our favorite part of any Commissioner's meeting, meet Fred.
Our pet of the week this week is Fred. Fred is five years young and the sweetest boy. Fred originally came to us as a stray after being abandoned on the local wildlife refuge. We have absolutely loved getting to know Fred. He has the goofiest and silliest personality. This big goofball will make everyone smile. Fred has been through heartworm treatment here and is now ready to find his forever home. To adopt Fred or foster one of our other animals, come visit us Monday through Friday at our shelter located in Manio. For more information, visit our website at O B X S P C A dot org or visit our O B X S P C A Facebook page.
So, please run down to the S P C A, take a look at Fred, maybe you can give him his forever home. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ross.
I like Fred.
Fred's cool.
I do. Let me just say quickly a couple of things. One, Bobby, thank you very much. Dave and Sally, they are not in the room. But this year's budget, summarization, presentation, format, the continued extraordinary credit rating of double A plus bumming our heads on triple A is essentially damn near impossible. So, we've got a very, very good group there. I try and understand it as best I can and they always come through. So, hearty congratulations and appreciation. Number two, a couple of plugs. The Oregon Inlet Fishing Pier is open. There's a new restaurant that opened there called The Sea Chef. And I had dinner there recently and it was really neat. A lady named Olivia Claire Spencer, who is a local tennis pro, and Chef Mac Boobin were the kindest hosts. And I'm just putting in a plug for the brand-new restaurant. They had a soft opening and it was really, really good. And finally, on Friday, the tenth, there will be a banquet at Jeanette's Pier. I'm being attending, supporting our local high school shooting teams for the proper and safe use of firearms, target practice, sportsmanship. And this fundraiser will benefit them. And again, I'm putting in a plug for that. That's all I've got, sir. Jeanette's Pier.
I'll be here.
Thank you, sir. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Glad, I can't wait to try that restaurant, that new restaurant out.
It was really fun.
Their food is outstanding.
And their interaction with us as, you know, the server, chef, so forth, fantastic. I mean, way above and beyond, so I was really pleased.
He's an excellent chef.
Yes.
Excellent.
Commissioner Bateman.
All right. Well, this is Teacher Appreciation Week. So, I would like to say many, many thanks to our teachers all over, particularly in Deer County because I think we have the best teachers. And I'm really happy that we're able to include, excuse me, include in our proposed budget a nice increase in the supplement because they deserve every single penny of it. So, thank you to the teachers, you're our heroes. Secondly, this morning, we've heard from several, we passed a couple of proclamations and heard from the Dare Arts. And it was all about community and connection of community and the power of community. And so, I'm very pleased that, you know, when we work as, together as a community, we can get a lot done. I'd like to thank the Parks and Recreation Department. Last weekend, weekend before last, we had about forty teams come in and play a baseball tournament. They had our fields looking good. People from out of town I talked to loved coming here for tournaments. And so, I'm very thankful that they were on the job and did a good, a really good job. I'd like to just say a couple of things about the Saving Lives Task Force and the presentation this morning. You had, they had a very nice article in the Coastland Times, a whole section about that, which gave a lot of information. And for people who may not be aware, the Deer County A B C Board supports alcohol absence education in our schools. We have been for the past several years supporting the Sold Out Program by Roman Gabriel. And I talked with Commissioner Overman a couple of weeks ago about that program. And I know the Saving Lives Task Force does, is one of their supporters. I did attend his presentation at Manio High School and just to see what the program's like, to see if we wanted to continue that. But in talking about the fentanyl, he really emphasizes that in his presentation. And it is such a big problem. And it's good to catch the kids that goes into middle school, I think, and, and to the ninth grade. So, I was really pleased about that. And I wish all the mothers out there, Happy Mother's Day this coming weekend.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Bobby, where are we with the site at the bomb center concerning our favorite Deer County sport?
We hired the, we've hired the engineer, he's designing the.
You come with ball.
He's designing the facility so we can get moving with the permitting.
Super, fantastic. Do we have a timeline?
I don't have, I can get it, but I don't have it. I'll let you know.
Good deal. All right, that, we had a very productive meeting today, I think. And we need a meeting to, motion to adjourn until June the third.
So moved.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House, seconded by Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimous.